Good morning and welcome to the August 24, 2022 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman McKeller followed by the pledge. You'll place stand.
Would you bow your heads and pray with me, please? In Philippians, the fourth chapter, the sixth verse says, "Be anxious for nothing." And then it goes on to talk about how we as citizens and how we as members have Jesus Christ to cover and carry out the things for us, and we're so thankful for that. Father, thank you so much for this great country. Thank you so much for this great city. Thank you so much, Father, for our mayor and our council, our city staff, our city manager, our city attorneys, and all of those that work every single day. That this country may be great, and this community and this city may be even greater. And Father, we pray that you will give all of us peace. Give us no division. Pray for love. Father, pray for those who are experiencing economic disparities and economic growth for everybody is necessary for us to be productive citizens in this nation. Father, we ask that you pray for our veterans. Pray for our service people who are traveling all around the world to make sure that we are safe. And Father, pray for those who are experiencing the floods throughout Texas and the lives that have been lost, and pray that we will be able to help those who are in need. And Father, finally, we ask that we will be able to vote on ordinance and things that will be beneficial to our city and that we will all work together as one team, the United States of America. In Jesus' name we pray, and let my Father's children say, "Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with approving the minutes from July 27, 2022.
Move to approve as presented.
Second. Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for some service awards. All right, we've got several service awards to give out. Some people are here, some are not, but I will start with Stephen Black, police officer, 25 years of service. Stephen, are you here? We have Peter Dameron, plant mechanic, 25 years of service. Richard Struther, police officer, 20 years of service. Now, if you're here, don't be bashful. Come on up. Dennis Matthews, police officer, 25 years of service. Well, it looks like everybody's working. It's good to have this 95 years of service. It is, I always say, these people who've been around a long time teach all the young people about loyalty and serving the community, not just for one or two years, but for an entire career. So, once again, let's thank all these employees. All right, P1, Darren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to request the City of Tyler, City Council consider receiving a presentation of the HAFSENT Sales Tax 2022-23 Annual Work Program in conjunction with the 2023-2022 Corporate Budget. As you know, every year we do this, the HAFSENT Board comes up, develops a proposed annual work plan, annual budget, which it recommends to the City Council for approval. Each annual work plan does include both projects planned for the next fiscal year and previous projects that are underway. Right now, we're in a 60-day comment period, public notice period, so that ends on October 12th, and after which time we will come back and ask for y'all's approval of the actual work plan after we get public comments. We have other funding sources that are, that we use, the city uses, including Tyler Water Utilities for their projects, hotel and tourism for theirs, Tyler Water, Tyler Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, the general fund for department-based funding. We also have grants from the FAA, Federal Transit Authority, TaxDOT, CDBG grants, Water Development Board, and several others. Some of these grants we have had in the past, for instance, like, and others who want a new grants we want to go for in the future, such as off-system bridges, we can get help from TaxDOT, and they would even prepare the application for us and everything, and there'll be a 90%, 10% grant. We also have sidewalks, neighborhood connections grants available, and we want to be able to apply for. Right now, let's go over current and completed projects for this fiscal year. We have quite a few. It's, as you can see through the list, right now, we have nine finishing up this fiscal year, in other words, before the end of next month. They include Holly Park Drainage Improvements, the College Avenue Storm, just right around the corner over here, the two drainage studies with, which were 65%, 35% Water Development Board grant projects helped us with that, Arbor Oaks Drainage, Comprehensive Stormwater Master Plan, the Flat Rock Sewer, Storm sewer pipe lining, Briarwood, the State Drainage Channel Wall Reconstruction. All of those are actually finishing or finished by the end of next month, so this fiscal year, in other words. Just as a, here are some pictures for each one, for some of them. Cloverdale, now that one is ongoing and it will be finished, looks like probably late this year, weather permitting, maybe early next year. Most of the pipe is in the ground, but we still need to, we still have a lot of work to go with the alley reconstruction and the street reconstructions and just a little bit more pipe, but most of it is in the ground. And you can see what it looked like before and what it looks like now in those pictures on the left. Holly Park, you can see what it looked like before and what it looks like now here. College, that's quite a bit of difference. It's dramatic difference between that and putting far. Mobility and street projects, quite a few going on, ongoing right now. Right now, the ones finishing up are, or have finished this year, Neighborhood Services Street Repair, Three Lakes Parkway, and the MLK Junior Boulevard improvements from Gentry to Broadway. We have the Sholler Road PER. We just had the stakeholder meeting yesterday, and thank you for coming, council members. It was nice to have you all there. So, we were getting input on that. There's quite a few going on here. Nothing, nothing better than a picture. Cambridge Road, we started that back in March, where it's, it's quite a bit better now. We've got a long way to go on that. It'll be finished at the end of next year, if we're in schedule to be finished.
Wow.
So, we have the annual asphalt enhancements. We've had some weather delays, some supply issue delays, and those, we have the Tyler Bike Stripes projects being completed, pedestrian improvements, and, as I mentioned earlier, Three Lakes Parkway. Traffic and airports, we have the Holly Park Drainage that is finished, but all these others are underway. New Copeland Corridor Signal Pedestrian Improvements, Gentry Corridor, Gentry Park Corridor Improvements, all the citywide traffic modernization, Year Two is underway, Legacy Trail Phase Two underway, Rose Complex underway, scheduled to be finished later this year also. And let's go to pictures. Always good pictures. Robert E. Lee Signal Improvements, you see the Grande Reverse Curve, that is finished, and we're looking at implementing some things in that one just at the moment. The Grande Old Noonday Traffic Signal, Legacy Phase Two Extension, Rose Complex, and the Taxway A, or Alpha, as it is in the acronyms for, that is current. Summary of costs of projects that are underway, you see airport is $764,000, 22 million, almost 23 million in streets, for a total of about $50 million worth of projects either finishing this year or currently underway and will finish here in the not-too-distant future. That's impressive to see the $50 million, all funded by the HAFSENT and grants. Next, let's talk about some new projects. New projects that we're going to start with, and let's start with airport projects. We have the airport runway painting and airport drainage repair, because they have drainage just like the rest of us, they have drainage issues, bonding water, things, and they have much stricter requirements for their drainage. Passenger boarding bridge reconstruction, runway lighting vault, it's getting all the needs, and then Taxway H, not Taxway, you've heard of Taxway Hotel, maybe it is Taxway H in the vernacular, that rehabilitation. Proposed street projects, we have the Neighborhood Connections, which includes Hankerson and Tenahaw. Those, what those, what that includes is just, there's about a one block or so missing from the streets, and we want to get those completed, we can connect those neighborhoods, and right here on the, on the photograph you see here, that bridge is taken out, but it was a rigged old bridge that kids would use to cross to go to the nearby school. The annual pedestrian improvement program, what that is, is that includes an ADA Transition Plan, which is required by the federal government, and we will, that, we will use that along with the ADA, that along with the existing sidewalk inventory that was done back in 2017, so we can prioritize what sidewalks we want to include as far, as part of our annual sidewalk improvement program. And the New Copeland Right Turn Lane, or Left Turn Lane, that's also more enhancing the school traffic, having just started up. We'll make some expansion there. Next, we have the Western Tree MLK Junior Reconstruction, signal reconstruction there for the traffic project. That one is, we will be starting on that immediately after. That is the top priority for us. Citywide Traffic Signal Inventory, Traffic Signal Modernization, this is Year Three of 10, continuing as previously approved. We have the SAP Tyler Connections, preliminary engineering report, and we also have the Railroad Inventory. Now, on the Railroad Inventory, it looks like we will try to partner with the Tyler Area Metropolitan Planning Organization to get the inventory done, and that way we can, we can partner with them, save some money, and then we can put more toward actually improvements on the, on some of them. I know we talked about as an option doing the Lake Street Crossing this year, because we want to get the inventory back potentially this fiscal year at time to start a project. We would probably just start with that one, knowing it is a high-profile, a high-priority Drainage projects, we have the Off-System TaxDOT projects. I mentioned earlier, we have the, this photo is along Grande between Holly Tree and Broadway that you're looking at, the CIPP projects next to it, what you're seeing there, cast-in-place, cured-in-place pipe is what CIPP stands for. Just for those of y'all that don't know, they just send a, basically a bladder down through there, and then it coats it, and then they just heat it, and it cures in place, and it's a, it's an impressive operation if you haven't seen it before. And that's what it looks like where previously it was pretty broken up, but it's, it gives us some structural strength also, not just the lining of the pipe. That right there is a 36-inch pipe that actually runs under several homes in the, in the city, and we rehabilitated that a few years ago. So, that's, and we're going to be doing some more here also, but that's where that photo comes from. We also doing the Glenwood Church of Christ, doing some improvements around that one. And the storm drainage improvements that were identified, the Keaton is included in one of these, that was identified in the recent study, so we will be, that included in this $2.75 million project. Summary of all costs for all the new projects, we show $626,000 for the airport. Now, taking into account, that's a $6.3 million project, worth of projects that we're only paying 10% for, for a total of about $16.3 million that we will be, new projects that will start in the next fiscal year. Right here, we have a beginning cash balance, just kind of show you everything of about $15.2 million. With everything, the revenues and expenditures, transfers out, the transfer out would be for the Rose Complex. The ending fund balance at the end of this fiscal year would be $7.5 million. Now, you should have received a, an updated project list that shows right here. These are the projects that will be funded in the next two years that are highlighted, and it shows which ones will be funded this coming 2022, '23, and then which ones will be '23, '24, with the bulk of it starting this, and then carry, design and/or construction will carry over to the next year. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments for Darren? Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to Z1, Kyle.
Morning, Mayor and Council. The first request we have today is a zone change request from multifamily to R2 to family residential. This is on Williams Street. The applicant's proposing the zone change to develop a duplex on the property. All the adjacent properties are zoned for multifamily uses and are developed with a mixture of single-family homes or undeveloped lots. The, this would amend the future land use guide to single-family and single-family attached. There's kind of a trend in this area to downzone some of these properties and develop single-family or duplex homes, homes in the area. As you can see here, the property is currently vacant. Of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor, actually, one was returned in favor and zero in opposition, and the plan to commission by a 5-0 vote, recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z1.
Second. Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This next item is a zone change request from Agricultural District in multifamily. This is North Broadway Avenue in Council District Number Three. The applicant's proposing to rezone this to multifamily to continue the, kind of the trend of higher-density housing in the north end there along North Broadway. The applicant plans to develop 200, or roughly 200 multifamily units in that area, which would help promote the goal of adding more rooftops to the north end. This is just north of the pinnacle of North Chase, and it's kind of a continuation of that, that activity up there. The, this is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the area as mixed-use center. This will help, you know, implement that as well. Of the notices that we received, we received them, one in opposition from the neighbor across, one of the neighbors across the street, I don't have on the map here, but they were just kind of, they had questions or concerns about additional traffic in the area, but this, this development would have to comply with all the requirements of the UDC, and with that, the plan to commission by a 5-0 vote, recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? We also have a card here from Ed Thompson, if anybody has any questions for Ed. Any comments for either of these gentlemen?
Move to approve, Z2.
Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This, this next item was tabled at the last, well, it's like at the last, yes, we'll have to remove it from the table.
Enter hand motion to remove it from the table.
To move it off the table.
Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Carry forward.
This is a, this is a request for a zone change on, off of Gentry Park, or Gentry Parkway in Schaefer Lane from, from single-family to light commercial C1, and it was tabled at the last meeting, the, the neighbor's had concerns about some of the drainage in the area, as well as kind of increase in traffic. The applicant wasn't at the meeting, but they are, they are here today. But I'll just give a little bit of a recap, so the, the applicant's requesting the rezone this to C1 to provide a commercial frontage on Gentry Parkway. The adjacent properties, property to the north is multifamily, it's currently undeveloped. There's also single-family to the northwest and west, and then to the south is also, there's a home currently constructed there to the south, and then also storage units in that PCD, that red portion there. This request would amend the future land use guide to neighborhood commercial, which is what you see across the street, close to Caldwell's Zoo, and then to the south, and it matched that designation. The, as you can see here, the property does front and long, it's at the corner of Schaefer Lane and Western Tree Parkway. The, they do plan to develop a commercial strip center, retail on that property. The applicant is here to discuss their, or representative for the applicant's here to discuss some of the finer details. We did receive two notices, well, actually, three notices in opposition. There was also a petition from some, from some other neighbors that were not within the 200 feet mailed notifications area, and generally, the concern is related to the drainage in the area along Schaefer Lane, and then as well as concerns about, you know, traffic from, from this, this development, and I think there were some concerns about some safety as well. As it relates to drainage, this development would be required to meet all the requirements of the UDC, the Development Code related to drainage. There, there has been some issues identified on Schaefer Lane in the Stormwater Master Plan, and there are some projects listed or recommended in that plan to address some of those issues. But with this property, they, they would either have to detain, you know, their, their drainage on-site or provide for, you know, adequate capacity elsewhere. So, again, the representative for the applicant may be able to discuss what they know about the site and what they plan to do. The, the plan to commission by unanimous vote, recommended approval of this zone change from R1A to C1.
So, does staff have to approve the drainage issues? Is a conversation that goes back and forth and back and forth, and the city ultimately approves whatever takes place?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Kyle? We've got several people to call up, but any big questions for Kyle before we proceed?
Kyle, do you know how far down the road on the Stormwater Master Plan, Schaefer Lane is?
So, there's, I believe there's two projects, one in the median area, and then one that continues further west towards the west loop. So, there's two projects to try to address that issue.
Darren may also have additional details that he could discuss in regards to the drainage project.
Yes, Councilman, the, the one right down south over across the way, a little bit to the west, is a higher priority as far as, as far as listing in the copy as a Stormwater Master Plan. It is number in the top 10. So, the other one is number 33, this actually Schaefer Lane compared to all the other issues around town.
Which, which one's Schaefer Lane?
The Schaefer Lane is the, is a lower priority on that.
All right. I'm going to call these folks up in no particular order. Patrice Young, come on up. And we are going to put a timer on it for three minutes, so you've got three minutes to say whatever you want, and if you can say your name and address for the record first.
Patrice Young, and I'm located at 2811 Schaefer Lane. So, my home is the second home as you come onto Schaefer Lane, and where the project is, is directly, almost directly across from where I live. I used to live in the Azalea District on Sunnybrook Drive, and there was a lot of flooding, a lot of damage, and a lot of drainage, and the traffic was high. So, when I found that home over there, and my neighbors there are well-established, they're settled, it's very quiet, and I, I love it there. But having this project directly across from my home, I just feel like it'll increase traffic more and crime, being that the location that it's in, it's very quiet there, so I just feel like, as big as the project is, it would just cost more of the damage. I feel like it wouldn't be peaceful. We would have to worry about, you know, people coming in, into our neighborhood, and I'm just not for it.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Sam Mazaic. Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Sam Mazaic, 7750 Holly Tree Drive. Where, you see our name kind of on this application. This property, if you historical, this was my grandparents' old farmhouse, like, when they moved from, from Washington State, they moved in 1947, this was their farmhouse. So, it's been in our family over 70, almost 75 years. And we were approached by this gentleman to purchase the property, and it was a hard decision for our family. Like I said, it's been in our family for, for years. This is my granddad's old farm, the whole, the whole area, this pecan orchard and all that. My dad, when he first came to Tyler in 1965, this was his first development. And back then, refresh your memory, the City of Tyler actually used to put in the streets, the water, the sewer, the storm sewers. So, I know storm sewer's been a huge question. I grew up actually on Schaefer Lane, and there is storm sewer on Schaefer Lane. There is at least a 54 or 60-inch storm sewer pipe on the north side of Schaefer. And what happens is, is that it extended down to where Charlotte's supposed to intersect at the dead end. And I think over time, sediment and everything blocked that pipe, and it's now buried. So, therefore, years later, when drainage went down there and said, hey, there's a problem, it was backing up, the city came in, this is, I mean, probably in the 90s, and they cemented over the inlet boxes. So, all the, all the water now is off Gentry Parkway, comes down Schaefer, and now the curbs, the streets, the only drainage system. So, a simple fix would be to go out in, because there's Charlotte, Charlotte Drive down at the dead end is a right-of-way, it's a city right-of-way. The city, if they just dug it up, there's a drainage easement to the, to the neighborhood, to the west, and all that water would drain. That's how it normally drains. There's some water comes off of Charlotte from the, from the south, and it would drain out to the west pretty easily. So, if you have any other questions, I'm, I'm a little more historical, but that's part of the zoning.
Any questions for Sam?
Yes, are you saying that you're in favor of selling your home?
Well, actually, we've already, we've already closed. So, well, your action has no effect. I'm, I'm here just to help with, I knew there was some questions about the zoning, so it's already closed. The money's in the bank. It's actually my mom and my uncle's property. so it's already closed, the money's in the bank, my, it's actually my mom and my uncle's property, that's, that's whose name's on the application. And, uh, so, your, your decision has no bearing on the, on the case. That's why I'm not here to, to, to argue, to, to approve it for my benefit. I'm just here to clear up the questions that may be here. But yes, I am in favor for the zoning, uh, but not to sell it, it's already sold. It's already closed, so.
Any other questions for Sam? All right, thank you. All right, next up is Wanda Nash. Come on up, Wanda. You state your name and address for the record.
I'm Wanda Nash, I'm, uh, it's twenty-nine thirteen Schaefer. We actually live at the very bottom of the, of Schaefer, and when the water comes down like it did the other day, it, it almost goes over the center of the street. The, the street sort of comes in the center, but it was almost up to the top, which is not unusual for it to do. Uh, it would be horrible if it went up into our yard. And like I said, we're at the bottom of the street, we don't have anything to do with the hot hardware. There, but that's just gonna increase, increase the drainage. And I, I would hate to have that happen to our home, as I'm sure y'all would hate for it to happen to your home. But if, like he was saying, I, I know where he's talking about, I, I see the water coming out right there at Patricia, where he was talking about, um, across the street. I, I wondered why it did that, and that must be why. But i- if that could be fixed, I would certainly love it. But, uh, of course, it's gonna increase the traffic on our street. Uh, it's not gonna be quiet anymore, you know, we're gonna have to fight that. Of course, I hate that, but not as much as, as the drainage issue. But anyway, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Dorinda Williams.
Good morning.
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 Dorinda Williams, two-nine oh-two Schaefer Lane, Tyler, Texas, seven-five-seven oh-two. We, the property owners of Schaefer Lane, continue to have the same decision to petition against the rezoning of the two-point-two-four acres of commercial real estate and on West Gentry and Schaefer. Changing the zoning on the residential from res- residential property can, um, be a challenging, uh, event. Based on property change could increase the traffic flow and accidents. Number two, property change could bring more people and traffic to our residential area. Property, uh, property change could infringe upon our privacy and the residents and the, uh, property owners. The property change could change, uh, cause high crime rate in our area. Property change could, um, cause this area to become a high-risk area for safety of our childrens who we are normally allowed to roam in the streets. Property change could increase the water damage, which we already have experiencing from east, west, north, and south. Property change could affect the residents' taxes and possible values of our property. Property change could create lots of accidents on the corner of Schaefer and Gentry. Property change could bring more trash litter to the area. We want to keep our streets clean as we, uh, clean and beautiful according to the slogan, keep Tyler beautiful. Property change is not a positive change for our overall area. For the record, the current owner has the right to sell his or her properties at any given time. Both, but do not make the entire street suffer for his or her self-gain. We, the property owners, humbly submit our petition to the city council and zoning to take deep consideration for the request against rezoning the change. Please leave this as a quiet residential area. Peace and blessings to all submitted by Dorinda Henderson Williams, property owner on Schaefer Lane.
Let me answer your question real quick for you. So, what do you think, for that land that, that we're talking about? What do you think long-term that land should be? Vacant, houses, commercial, I mean, what do you think long-term? A lot of times when this, this kinda stuff comes up, I think to myself, the neighbors don't want the growth, and I, I get all your reasoning. And my thought, in my mind is, i- if, if, if people don't want things to be developed, they should buy it.
No, that's not, that's not our thoughts behind it. We want to make sure that the retail is not, um, placed there. We don't oppose to selling the properties, putting houses there, because it's not gonna increase the traffic flow like it will be in a commercial project.
Okay. Any other, y'all have questions for Ms. Williams? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Lawanda Johnson.
Good morning, I'm Lawanda Johnson, address twenty-eight oh-five Schaefer. And I just wanna reiterate what they've said. Um, we purchased the home about twelve years ago, were the first home owned as you come into the, uh, street. And we purchased that home due to the, uh, quietness and due to the, uh, nature of the area. And me and my husband were planning to retire there, but we think with all the new changes that it will be, uh, more crime and more, um, traffic, and that's something that we were, you know, hoping to avoid. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, Charlotte Wickware.
Good morning, my name is Charlotte Wickware, I live at twenty-nine oh-nine Schaefer Lane. When we moved into that neighborhood, I moved down there because it's a quiet subdivision. You come down, and it's, the kids can roam, they can feel free. But if that changes, it's gonna open up to where it's more, um, you know, people coming in and out. And we feel like that, you know, it's gonna create more crime down there, because we have had people that run down into our neighborhoods that has had theft from another facility in that area. And as far as like our drainage, it's horrible, because we catch all of Gentry Parkway's rain. When it comes down, we get all their water, and it is horrible. Like they said, the, uh, the water just comes up over the curb, and it's sitting, now it's just sitting out in the middle of the road, it's so bad. And when I get to bed to pull into my driveway, it's just horrible. I go to pulling in and I have to pull in real fast because it's so much water sitting into my driveway. And so that's our biggest concern, is mainly the water. And it's dark on our streets, and we feel like also that it's gonna increase our taxes, and they're already increased amazingly. And so, you know, that is our biggest concern over on twenty-nine, uh, over on Schaefer Lane. If y'all could just see the drainage that comes down when it rains, it's horrible.
All right, thanks, Ms. Wickware, any questions? Okay, you're good, thank you. Dellois Jeter.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Dellois Jeter, I live at twenty-nine eighteen Schaefer Lane, at the end of Schaefer. Not only, well, I'm coming to tell you the damaged part of Schaefer. It had ruined two cars of mine, you cannot, when it rains, you can't park on the side cause the water rides so high in my yard, it's like a swimming pool. It seeps in my cars. Not only if I take, I catch the water off of Schaefer, I catch it off of the storage building behind me, which is sharp. I don't put any new drainage back there to run it out. It seeps through my, my back door, it'll come in that way. We done routed, uh, trenches, trying to get it around, so it won't run in the house, which it have damaged floors and damaged two cars. Um, and not only that, it is dark on Schaefer. We have no lighting down there at the end. The only time you have lighting, when you come off, first come off of Gentry. It's a dead-end street, so we get all the traffic at the end, turning around in our driveway, they hung, busted up the concrete in my yard, and they go on out. And then, I have been there twenty-six years, I have raised all my kids there. It's quiet neighborhood, it's not for a commercial, it's not for a mall, it's not for stores, cause you don't have a turnaround, you don't have anything but peaceful, only us that's gonna retire. I, I hate, I have to think about my age, I ain't old enough. And the crime is already, you know, setting in. Folks have broke in folks' homes, I have had a break-in, and, and it's just woody, you know? Because they didn't take Schaefer all the way through, they didn't take Charlotte all the way through. So, they hop our fence, do what they gonna do, hop back over and go back over on Charlotte. So it's gonna bring more crime, because they gonna see new stores there. And they just gonna have their way with us. You know, so, I'm against it, because of the danger and the safety it's gonna bring us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeter. Uh, Tina Moore. Morning.
My name is Tina Moore. I've been living there since two thousand and ten. I raised my son there. I was a single mom, I just got married, but Schaefer's a quiet, quiet street. We do have our things that happen in the back of the park. Oh, excuse me, my address is twenty-nine oh-one Schaefer Lane. Um, we do have a park there, people come and jump the fence, uh, come through our yard sometime at night. Having that new, um, commercial, uh, setting, I feel that it will bring more people coming through, stealing, jumping our fence, going to the park, or going, it's just too much. It's, it's entirely too much. I'm totally against you building whatever. You asked earlier about the, the lot, build another house, let someone build another house there. That's a residential, it's not commercial. When I purchased my home, it said residential, it didn't say light commercial, it didn't say none of that. That's not what I had envisioned staying around. If I wanna be around commercial, I would've got me a home, light commercial, commercial, whatever. That's not what we want. What we do want is those drainage to be fixed. I had started having my trash people pay extra money, because when it rains, my trash can will go all the way down to the end. I come home, I work out of town, I come home at night, I have to go down the street to pull up my trash can. As a single mom, no, that, no, that shouldn't be. The rain should not take my trash can all the way down the street. And then sometimes when my neighbors see it, my neighbors will bring my trash can up to their house, and I'll just go down there and pick it up. But no, the drainage need to be fixed, and we need to keep our privacy, let us enjoy our homes. We're paying for them, we bought them, we paying the taxes on them, let us enjoy our neighborhood. Because what you're talking about doing is not gonna help us. That's not what we want. And I don't think it's fair that you bring something in when the majority of us, all of us, don't want it there. We just want our drainage fixed and put lighting out there, because it is dark. And we have said this many times before, they even purchased that, we made them, we talked about with our neighborhood, watching everything, we told them, put new lights out, fix our drains, it's not happening. So if you can't give us what we asked for, we've been begging for, then why? Why do this to us, that's wrong.
Time's up, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, I've got one other name here, and I'm not sure if, if it's this item or another item, Halagama?
It's for another item.
What item?
Commerce.
Okay. All right, that's all the cards we've got. Darren, can you come back up? And then I'd, I'd like to get Sam, you or your, your clients to come up and kinda talk about what you're proposing to do, and... So, the drainage that they're all talking about. And what Sam has mentioned with some things being concreted up or, or whatever. Is there a short-term solution for, for the concern, or is this a long-term, or...
Really, as far as the development on the, on the site itself, they have, our UDC right now states that they must evaluate the downstream facility, and we already know the downstream facility is maxed out. So as far as capacity, so they will have to either increase the downstream capacity of some kind where it does mitigate any existing issues, or they have to detain onsite or some other similar fashion. So they would not be increasing the stormwater runoff off that site from pre-existing conditions. So, as far as the stormwater runoff in that respect, I think from a regulatory standpoint, we can help mitigate that as far as not making it worse. So, uh, as far as a long, a short-term solution, we, I will go out there personally and look at that, and, and let's find out, uh, I will even meet with some of them while I'm walking and looking at it, and going back through and just be a much deeper dive than the comprehensive stormwater master plan did. And let me, let me move this up on the priority scale, see what I can do about that.
So if this is commercial or residential, e- either one, is it gonna have the same impact on the drainage?
Typically residential does not require any type of onsite detention or anything like that. So we don't require that for residential, no, we do require that for commercial. Now, that is a, that is a typical thing, it's the standard operating procedure.
So if they decided to just keep it residential, then they just build houses and not do anything with drainage? But if it's commercial, they're gonna be required to address it?
That is a typical, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have something, if you don't mind. First, I, I wanna say that I, this particular property sits in my district, and I have so much compassion listening to people that I know so well and what they are experiencing. And I have actually spoken with some of the residents there, as well as the builder. And so, the one thing that I, I kinda wanna talk about, I, I heard crime, and so I want to mention that, uh, our police chief, Toler, and I, and others here on this council have talked about putting a substation for, uh, for the police department in the area to kind of address the crime that they're talking about. And then, I also mentioned that perhaps working with the storage people and all of the people involved to build a retainer wall to, to capitalize on, on the drainage that they're talking about, because it, it does, I've been down that street when it rained really hard, and it is a catastrophe down there that they are experiencing. So if, if we're gonna be able to improve the drainage by, uh, working with the storage people or working with the people who want to build, uh, that would help them with their drainage. But if it remains with just residential, I hear that, that they're responsible for it. Is that what you're saying, that they have to, to improve on their drainage? But commercial people ha- they're responsible for making sure that the water doesn't drain back down into their neighborhood?
The ordinance does say that whatever you do on a site must, you must do, you must look downstream. Now, from a practical perspective, is what I'm saying, from a residential street, residential houses, the, the amount of impervious surface added typically is not near the capacity as, near the impervious surface as added on a commercial site. So from a practical perspective, we haven't really required anything in the past for just a commercial house to go on a lot. That's the reason I say that. So, w- when, when you say they would be required to, to mitigate it or help it and all that, we would, we would still want to look at that, and still even, just as it is right now. Cause I know we do have the drainage easement that goes, it goes down to, uh... Because I know we do have the drainage easement that goes, it goes down to Patricia, I believe it is. It goes north-south, and then it turns, it's supposed to turn, and then go out of drainage and onto the west. That is correct. Because that's, that's the way it shows right now, and I've seen the analysis in the comprehensive stormwater master plan. It does identify, and actually they validate everything that's in the comprehensive stormwater master plan that we're seeing. But it even shows stuff coming from the storage also.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Darren?
I do, I've got one quick question. It's just a point of clarification. Is that still an active storm drain line that's on Patricia? That the inlet boxes have been concreted over, or is it just self-deadened and abandoned?
The, the existing storm drain line is, and I've talked with Robin, who used to work in street maintenance. So what they did is they used to have water, apparently it's my understanding that in the past, there was that, like he said, the fifty-four to sixty-inch pipe put in behind the curb, and then it would stop, and it was going to be extended for, like, the phase two that went through, down through there. But it was not extended. So what was happening is water was getting in from the two culverts, from the two inlets, on Gentry, coming into the street, and then coming onto the street, and then all the thing falling onto the street, goes through there, and was going into four inlets in there, in the street. And then it was hitting the end of that pipe and just stopping and then blowing out, backing up and blowing out the inlet. So what the street department did, just as a temporary fix, was they just sealed the openings on all those four inlets, so it would just continue in the street. So, what really needs to happen, probably, and we'll verify that, I don't know why it wouldn't, but is to extend that pipe if it hasn't been already, and then daylight it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Darren? Thank you.
Well, I do, wait, 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 sorry. So, I guess a comment and then a question. You know, it's unfortunate we're spending so much time talking about drainage over this issue, because that's not what we should be dealing with. And I drove down that street yesterday, and it's exactly what they said. They're all sealed up, and there was dirt on the streets, so you could tell it had flooded into the street. The street is the drainage system down there. It's a nice street, and there's nice homes down there. Is there a way, you know, so ideally that we wouldn't be talking about this, but is there a way to kind of catch back up and take care of this? You know, to move that further up the list of projects, I guess what I'm asking?
Let me look into that.
Okay.
One of the things with the budget, I mean, y'all are spending actually more on drainage in the coming year than you've ever had before. So projects like this, where this would be kind of an operational piece to look at, you are starting to put funding towards.
Thanks, Darren. Thank you. Sam, do you want to come up? Either, either Sam. I want this, I want the Sam to come up, that can tell us what, sorry. Sam, an address for the record, please.
Uh, Sam Scarborough, five twenty-two West First Street. So, I'm the broker for the buyer. And so, if you look at, on that zoning map, I mean, this is kind of a commercial property. It's on Gentry. And some of the issues, I think we're talking about drainage, and everything we're doing is going to be to city code. We'll have a civil engineer design this, make sure all the runoff stays where it's supposed to, goes where it's supposed to. And we want to work with the neighbors and make, we don't want to be a problem. Uh, if anything, we want to, we're going to build a pretty nice retail strip center. We just fixed up the one by the Chili's, that one. So we kind of fixed up that nineteen-seventy shopping center, and we've got some really good people coming in there, Asian restaurant, you know, different things like that. So we want to add value to that street, especially on the north side of town. And our access, our ingress and egress will only be off of Gentry. So we won't have a curb cut on Schaefer. So that'll keep people from riding down Schaefer Lane anyway. Can't think what else. Uh, and the way the strip center is going to sit, it's going to be in the middle of the property, so we'll have parking on the backside and the front. And also, the property's going to be lit up to city code for photometric. So, it'll be lit up, I don't, I'm hoping, I can't control anything, but I doubt this is going to be an increase in crime. If anything, it's going to deter it, because it's going to be lit up, and hopefully that'll bring some more energy to that area, and hopefully get the drainage fixed, and we'll street lights for everybody. So, I'm happy to answer any questions if I can, and...
I was going to ask, have you had a chance to meet with the neighbors?
I did. I talked to Dorenda, Max, Nash, and then Cheryl and I met as well. So, I was talking to Dorenda, she was kind of communicating for everybody. So, we spoke a few weeks ago.
So Sam, will that be any kind of retainer wall that's built at the back of that property?
Uh, well, most likely, except north-west. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, so I believe, if I remember right, on that contour map, just from the appraisal district, that northwest side kind of slopes down about fifteen feet, so it just kind of shears off and goes straight down. So, I'm not a civil engineer, but I mean, if we have to do a retaining wall, we'll do everything we have to, to be up to code. City's going to be looking at the plans, and it'll all be stamped and engineered correctly.
Because I walked down it, and I slid down it.
Yeah, I mean, it goes about fifteen feet within, over a thirty, forty-five foot distance. So, I mean, there's no wonder there's drainage issues, but we're hoping to help with that. Everything's going to be up to city code and civil engineers, so...
Sam, what about, you know, not to, if you don't know yet, just so you don't know, that northwest corner, especially where that house is, are y'all thinking about doing any type of landscape buffers, stuff like that, so they're not looking at the end or the back of a retail?
Uh, I'm just, I'm the, I'm the broker, but, uh...
That's true.
I would, I don't know that answer to that question, but we're, I mean, we're going to make it look pretty nice. And right now, there's a house on there. I think we've had to board that house up, because people are breaking in, so that's probably causing some issues, maybe? So anyway, that, that house will be demolished. And so that'll hopefully clean up some of that, just empty abandoned house, that someone can just go in and do whatever they're doing. But, I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, that's true. That's not, that's not a fair question for you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have landscaping, and I've guessed, that's all city code anyway, so... We'll make it look nice, because we want to have good tenants there. You know, we don't want to have problems either.
Yep.
Sam, you'll come back up?
Yeah.
Don't I put the clock on you?
No, nothing. I'm not, I'm not running for anything, promise. Uh, Brad, well, going to answer your question is, the UDC currently requires, anytime a commercial property abuts residential, it requires buffer, a buffer area. So that will be required, just like Sam was saying, that every code, the UDC, drainage, engineering, the city's got to approve everything, stamp before anything's built. Again, that's something usually, the zoning occurs first, and then they have to jump through all these hurdles to pass all the city ordinances and codes, drainage, engineering, before anything's built. So, but yes, there will be buffer area, it will have to be.
And I guess, I guess that's where I was going a minute ago, is, and I'm not proposing anything right now, but if it, if it is zoned commercial, there's more safeguards for the neighbors to have the drainage corrected than if it's, than if it remains residential?
Absolutely. I mean, there's, the city doesn't have to look at any downstream, I mean, the developer or builder doesn't have to look at downstream, you know, drainage, or really how much runoff off the site is if they built a home. But if they're building a commercial site, they've got to account for all of that, every bit of it. So, without, without, if you, basically if this stays the way it is, and he doesn't develop, everything stays the same. Nothing's improved. But if it is approved, and he does, you know, design a building, and it goes, and it gets stamped by the city, and he does make the improvements, improvements are made.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Cut quiet up here. Any questions for Kyle? Any thoughts? Any motion?
I'll just echo what Sam said. Property stays just like it is. Yes, Darren's going to look into Schaefer Lane, see what, you know, current or quick solutions there could be on the drainage. But if we vote and pass this to change the zoning, and as they move forward on the project, the developer now is deeply involved in the drainage work. So we know drainage work's going to get taken, or drainage work will be done on the project. Right now, nothing. Build homes, drainage work, it's going to stay the same, other than what Darren said he can go look at and possibly move this up on the drainage program. I, I see it if you, if the zoning changed, if we approved that, it's almost more, it's going to be more immediate solutions to the problem. And if the developer does what he says, lights it, no access on Schaefer, your ingress, egress off Gentry, to me, that, that looks like that might be a win for the neighborhood in getting better lighting, getting rid of a house that's a problem, and drainage, which that's the common theme of everybody that's talked about, is the drainage. This might be the quickest solution on helping the drainage. Now, that's just my thought.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Ms. Dorenda Williams to return to the podium?
Sure.
This one, yes. My mother-in-law is acting up really bad, so I was barely able to stand up there with, you know, the turkey, so is it okay?
Any one, any one of the neighbors?
This, the discussion though, it's got to be, is this okay? Is this your spokesman?
Yes. Gales Jeter, twenty-nine eighteen Schaefer Lane.
And did we get your name, sir?
Gales Jeter, twenty-nine eighteen Schaefer Lane.
So, everything that you've heard here in the discussion in regards to what could happen if, in fact, this got approved, are you satisfied with anything that you have heard that would improve the neighborhood, the drainage, and then of course, the crime that Ms. Young brought in about? And I mentioned the substation that's going to be there at Four Corners area?
Well, you know, ma'am, I really think it's sad. Gentry already have a lot of vacant business. There's, you go over down Gentry, a lot of vacant businesses there. He's saying that for us to get our drainage fixed, we're doing a business. No, that's the city to take care of us like we pay our taxes. We shouldn't have to get our drainage fixed. Our business. They don't help, everybody's on those neighborhoods, those houses, just like we all buy our houses.
Can you speak to the microphone?
We all buy our houses, because we're like a peaceful, quiet, family neighborhoods. They want to change that. When you got all these empty businesses all the way down Gentry, both sides. Why you can't put your business down there in the business area, and then let's move into the residential areas if you have to? But it don't look good. You have new business there, vacant business there. It don't look good. And it's not helping to the neighborhood. Also, right there by Passadas, that lot beside Passadas, that water come down beside Passadas, jump that hill, run through that, um, empty lot, and go down the neighborhood.
That's south of you?
Mm-hmm.
And outward?
No, and it's, it's just not that, just think about the families. Everything's not about business, but the family neighborhood. A quiet, dead-end neighborhood. The kids can run and play all day. Everybody comes and goes down that street. But you want to change that? Well, we say, well, they want to do this, we want to do that. He's giving answers, but he's not giving direct answers. He's giving business answers to, well, they'll do this, they'll do that. He's not being specific to what they're doing, what they want to do. Like they do, you know how it goes. You give direct answers, you get the business, whatever. We want our neighborhood to stay a family neighborhood. That's it. If you get all the empty business off of Gentry, then consider taking somebody's property.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a clarification for Kyle.
Okay.
Kyle? The zoning request you did say is consistent with the zoning in the area along Gentry, correct? The zoning request is consistent with the zoning that's already exist on Gentry?
Yeah, I mean, you can see here on the map, there's, uh, existing commercial zoning in that area, across the road, by the, by the zoo, and then to the south. And again, as you go further north, it gets, all that zoning around is actually more intense than what they're asking for in terms of allowable uses. So C two would allow for outdoor activity as well, you know, outdoor, like car, car sales or tattoo shops. C one would not allow for any of that, any of that, it'd be limited to office development, like retail, restaurants, things like that. So it's actually, along Gentry, it would be one of the, as, as you go further south, as you get adjacent to those neighborhoods south of here, you see C one as well. And so I think that's to, uh, uh, in relation to the adjacent residential uses. As, when there isn't any adjacent residential uses, it's kind of higher intensity commercial use. So, so in that respect, yes, I would say that it's following that pattern that you currently see.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just simply want to add one thing to that. You know, part of our strategic plan is to encourage growth, both residential and commercial. In the north side specifically, it states that in our strategic plan. So, with that, that's the reason for my question.
You know, this is one of those deals that, uh, there's not a very good middle ground. And whatever, we're going to make a decision, and I hope it's not something that we just table and kick the can down the road. But the, the bad thing is, whatever decision is made, it, it is, everybody's not going to like it. But we got to make it, we got to make a decision. And, like I said before, and I'm not promoting this one where the other, but, but, you know, this is a zoning item. And like Brad was saying, we're, we are here to, to rezone something, and not to solve a drainage issue. We're not engineers. And Darren has got the seal. And Darren is the one that will be working on the drainage issues. So, you know, to me, it's a zoning issue, and, and the drainage is, is a byproduct of, of the zoning. So, all that being said, you know, I'm not going to make a motion, but I, I think it's time that somebody up here makes a motion, so we can move on.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? Also, favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, before we go to the next item, let's give everybody just a minute or two to kind of, because we're coming up with some really exciting stuff. So this is your chance to, to get out of here before we start the exciting stuff. Thank y'all. All right. Let's, uh, let's move on to Z four. Kyle?
This next item is a zone change request from R one A, single-family, to R two, two-family residential district. Uh, this is off of Divine Street in the Midtown District. The applicant's requesting the change to, uh, to rezone these two properties for R two and develop duplexes on the properties. Uh, the surrounding properties are, to the north, are institutional uses operated by TJC. Uh, to the east are, uh, a townhome development, R one D. And also, to the south is also R one D with a townhome, or two-unit townhome, which, which would appear to be a duplex. Uh, and then to the west, and southwest, are single-family homes. Uh, this request would amend the future land use guide to reflect that single-family, single-family attached, because they are duplexes. Uh, it's kind of the trend, these, these ones that you see here, adjacent to the east and to the south, are recent developments, uh, to effectively develop a duplex on those properties. And so this is continuation of that, um, of the notices that were sent out. Zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. And the plan and commission by seven-zero vote recommended approval of a zone change from R one A to R two.
Any questions for Kyle? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Thank you. Uh, second by, or motion by McCallister, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z five.
This next request is a zone change from R two to R one D, uh, which is two-family to a single-family attached and detached. Uh, this is at the end of Crosby Lane. And you can see the properties are currently, there's currently three, uh, four lots, but mostly three and a little piece there, uh, of property. It's currently zoned, R two is currently undeveloped. Uh, the properties to, the surrounding properties are also zoned generally for duplexes, and are either developed with single-family homes or currently vacant. Uh, the applicant's requesting this change to be able to essentially finish Crosby Lane, put a cul-de-sac...
put a cul-de-sac at the end of that street, and develop lots off of that. Because of the lot size requirements, that's why they're, they're seeking the R one D zoning, which would, which has a smaller lot size, but they do plan to develop a single-family detached homes. As you can see here, the future land use guide is a single-family medium low density. This would amend it to single-family, single-family attached. However, they, again, they plan to do detached, uh, single-family homes. And so Crosby Street currently dead ends here, and so they, they plan to put a cul-de-sac and turnaround for that, for Crosby, and then put lots off of that and build, build homes. This is in the, the north end, and this would help implement the, the plan to add more, more homes in the north end, and the plan to commission by a five-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z six.
This is a zone change request from RPO Office District to R two, two-family. This property is also in the Midtown District, is generally surrounded by single-family homes and offices. This, this, this property was previously zoned R two and developed with a duplex. Then it was zoned to office. The applicant's now requesting to go back to a duplex, and so they, that's the purpose of the request, and it's currently developed with a duplex, and they will use it as such if this is approved. The plan to commission by seven-zero, by five-zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Move to approve Z six. Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z seven.
This is a zone change request from C two, general commercial district, to R one D, single-family attached and detached. This is along East Commerce Street. The applicant's requesting the ability to develop a single-family home. The, this large, the adjacent properties are generally zoned for industrial or commercial uses, but are developed with, with single-family homes, at least to the east and the south. Go show that in a minute. And so they, and those properties are kind of laid out, really only suitable for residential use. I think previously it was developed with a residential home. And so the, this request would be consistent with the future land use guide, using it for a single-family. As you can see here, there are single-family homes developed in this area, and this would help implement that as well. And as you can see here, there appears to, previously been a home on that, that property, and so they're, they're trying to go back and do the same. And so of the notices sent up, sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition, and plan to commission recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle? We do have one card from Hi-Legama. Do you want to speak, or we're on a roll here?
It's broken.
Okay, okay.
Move to approve Z seven. Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now to the exciting stuff. H one.
We need to take a break. We're good.
How about Bob?
What about Bob?
Hey, that's pro-bob.
We're good. Thank you.
All right, so y'all good? Mayor Warren and City Council, we appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning for the first of two public hearings on proposed $228 million budget for operations and capital improvements along the Advalorm property tax rate to support these services. The budget we are presenting today is the, our maps for the year ahead. We built the recommendations in this budget from the guiding themes of Tyler First at the larger level of the city's growth and strategic plan for the next five years. With these two not, with these two documents as our focus, we then develop a plan of services and operations that move in the direction that these plans point towards. We use our annual budget document to advance the city of Tyler's vision to be nationally known for its sense of community, commitment to a robust business environment, quality medical care, excellent educational institutions, and the beauty of its public spaces and neighborhoods. The city of Tyler is committed to enhancing the work environment for our men and women in our police and fire departments. We understand that for them to offer the citizens the highest quality level of service, we must provide them with the necessary resources. While formulating the fiscal year 2023 budget, we ask how we can make improvements to ensure these resources were available. For our police department, we looked at how we procure the equipment necessary for our officers to perform their duties. In prior years, we have included capital purchase requests related to body cameras, tasers, and other necessary duty items in our budgets. These requests usually replace the oldest equipment first and seldomly replace every unit in the entire department. In the 2023 budget for you, we have found an innovative solution that will allow our officers to be, always be equipped while they are on duty. Part of this budget allows for a $2 million capital outlay over the next five years. This capital outlay will act almost like a subscription service for our officers in the replacements of tasers, body cameras, license plate reader systems, and more. We'll equip our officers with brand-new equipment, and if at any time the equipment is no longer good due to damage or age or other factors, we can be able to send those back to the manufacturer and have them replaced at no additional charge. This will allow us to keep the necessary equipment in the hands of our officers for them to perform at the highest level without worrying about if they are going out on duty without the equipment needed. In the 2023 budget, we continue to add firefighter positions to help staff our new ladder truck, which should be completed and delivered sometimes in the next fiscal year. In addition to the new fire recruits, we look at how we replace one of the major pieces of equipment all firefighters need to perform their jobs, which is how we replace our fire engines. With the current supply chain issues the economy is experiencing, and after discussions with fire engine manufacturers, we determined that from purchase to delivery of a new fire engine has increased from 12 months to two years. This means the replacement schedule the city had initiated in the 2021 fiscal budget has now altered by forces outside of our control. In the 2023 budget, we were able to find ways to cash fund the purchase of two new fire engines so that we could follow our fire engine replacement schedule and not withhold necessary resources for our firefighters to perform a high-quality service for our When formulating our budget, one of the areas we analyze is how well are we spending funds based off of what the citizens view as the most important factors of our community. We know our community is highly invested in public safety, and therefore our budget should also reflect those views. The information presented in front of you just highlights how we have listened to our citizens. In our budget formulation in fiscal year 2019 and 2020, we were focused on paying off leases for equipment related to public safety. And of course, in 2021, the COVID pandemic occurred. In fiscal year 2022 and 2023, with the obligations from previous lease agreements on police and fire equipment paid off, we've been able to cash fund requests for public safety, whether that be for positions such as our homeless research, homeless outreach officer and computer, or computer forensic detective that were funded for last year, or equipment such as laptops and police cruisers and fire engines that allow our public safety staff to provide the highest quality service for our citizens, businesses, and visitors during their most difficult times. Another issue our community has brought forward to us in recent years has been how to help clean up the blighted properties throughout the city. We are able to present in this budget dedicated funding to help us achieve this goal for our citizens. As part of the 2023 budget, we set aside $200,000 to help with the removal of derelict structures throughout the city. With this, these funds, the priority for the city are not structures having negative appearance, but structures that create a public safety concern for all citizens in Tyler. Now, I'd like to take some time to highlight some quality of life improvements for our community, starting with the update to the Rose complex. The WT Brookshire Convention Center, which council approved in fiscal year 2022, will be completed, completed in the first quarter of fiscal year 2023, and our first event should be held in early 2023. We have included in this budget funding to make sure updates, or to make some updates to the Tyler Rose Garden Center. These updates will include upgrades to our elevator at the Rose Garden for ADA accessibility, and remodel of the kitchen areas in the Rose Garden Center to make repairs and provide a more appealing look to these dated areas. Also during 2023, we have a capital improvement scheduled to take place at a few of our parks. Including this budget, we are proposing renovations for the Lindsay Park softball fields, Parlor Park redevelopment, and upgrades to Winter's Park, all of which are funded by our Parks Capital Improvement Fund. The city created this fund last year to ensure our parks have dedicated funding for maintenance and improvements. These funds are collected in the use of the city-owned landfill. There are also upgrades slated for PT Coal Park, which we funded through our Community Development Block Grant Program. In park operations, we've added $100,000 for the removal of damaged or dead trees. Since winter storm Yuri and spring 2022 winter storm that Tyler experienced, the city has seen an increase in the number of trees that have been damaged or died and need to be removed as they pose hazards to our public. We continue funding upgrades to our meters and meter boxes, our two-inch water line replacement program, and water repairs in the areas where we are conducting our asphalt overlay program. This year's cash-funded capital projects include filter replacements at the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant, rehabilitation of the Shiloh Road Elevated Storage Tank, a raw-water pump replacement at Lake Tyler, and various upgrades to our South Side and West Side wastewater treatment plants. In total, we're expecting to spend approximately $12 million in cash-funded capital projects. That's in addition to the estimated $29 million in consent decree-related projects that are scheduled. As part of the 2023 budget, we are cash-funding almost $1 million in stormwater maintenance projects. This is the first time we've been able to include specific item in our operating budget and fund them at such a level. Ensuring proper maintenance is performed on these assets will can translate to long-term savings. In addition to the money in the city's operating budget, our half-cent budget includes an additional $5.6 million for stormwater drainage projects. Our commitment to our largest infrastructure investment, our streets, continues with two cents on the property tax rate set aside towards our Quality Street Commitment Fund. It is expected that we will generate $1.8 million towards asphalt seal coating and crack sealing in the coming years. This will provide for approximately 25 lane miles for streets repaired and maintained in our city, which in addition to the $3.5 million budgeted from the half-cent sales tax fund for overlay projects. As we developed a more extensive Brick Street Repair Program last fiscal year and continue building it in the coming year, we're increasing the funding for the Brick Street enhancements to $595,000. As with stormwater, where our street project funding is supplemented by an additional $16.1 million in budgeted in half-cent. These half-cent projects go beyond regular maintenance and repairs to include projects that incorporate mobility for both pedestrians and motorists. We understand that none of the items highlighted above matter if you do not have quality staff to ensure these projects stay on course. That is why in fiscal year 2023, we are taking a long look at what we can do to retain and attract staff that embody the call-to-serv spirit. To help staff in the current economic climate, we are beginning, but we begin by offering a 5% base pay increase to our civil service staff, and our non-civil service staff will receive up to 5% base pay increase based off of their annual performance evaluations. For fiscal year 2023, sales tax revenue continues to be the main funding stream for our general fund activities. Our projection for property taxes, based on the rate I'll discuss in a minute, are approximately 31% of the general fund budget. We looked at how overall increases in funding compared to the increases in public safety budgets earlier, and it's interesting to note that while we focus on ensuring those individuals have the resources they need, our property tax only covers less than half of the expenditures that the police and fire department need. This is why we continue to work on different revenue streams for our general fund services to protect the franchise fees, grants, and other revenue opportunities beyond property Before we get into the proposed property tax rate discussion, I think it would help if we looked at the change in our taxable value. Historically, the changes in property values, tax values have increased approximately 3% to 4% per year. We've had some years that have been outside of that range because of one-time items added to the tax rolls. For instance, three years ago, taxable values increased 6% due to values being added back to our total for ETMC properties, changing from status from non-taxable to taxable. Then we went right back to the 3% to 4% range. This year has been different, to say the least. The change in taxable values we experienced is the largest increase in 15 years. Our average home value went from $218,000 to $259,000, which is a 19% increase. Now, the thing about taxable values is when they change, they not change the same for everyone. The tax rate we're about to discuss will affect each property owner differently as we use averages for all appraised value changes in calculating tax rates. We are recommending a property tax rate decrease for the coming year to provide for the enhancement of services discussed earlier that we have built into this proposed budget. Your current Advalorm property tax rate is 26.99 cents per $100 valuation, and we're proposing through this budget to adopt a rate of 26.185 cents per $100 valuation. This property tax rate is the lowest of cities over 15,000 in population in Texas and reflects the values of the blueprint as set in 1995. Our property tax rate is significant as it does not have any debt components associated with it. For every other tax rate that is set in the state of Texas, from counties, cities, and school districts, nearly every one of them will have a portion set for debt repayment or interest and sinking rates. The city of Tyler has every dollar collected on its property tax levies going straight to our operations for the public. Every penny paid by our citizens is used towards maintenance and operation of city With our agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, on the wastewater collection system consent decree in 2016, and commitment to improving our water quality to our customers, we have increased our rates on water and wastewater services for the past five years to pay for the costs involved in operations and capital improvements. We still compare very favorably to the rest of the water, wastewater services provided in Texas. Using the Texas Municipal League Annual Utility Cost Survey, we see that our rates are lower on residential water fees and similar, similar or lower on wastewater rates depending on usage as compared to other cities' utilities rates. For the coming fiscal year, we're not proposing any increases on the base rates for water and/or wastewater service. These rates will remain flat per usage for our customers. We are implementing, though, phase one of our Uniform Volumetric Rates Conversion, which is a change from our current declining rate structure. The declining rate structure provides for the more water you use, the less you pay for per gallon. The state of Texas has pushed for utility rates to be designed to encourage water conservation for our water resources throughout the state, and we are the last city in the, in Texas to have a rate structure that is not a water conservation-based. We are proposing the use of the Uniform Volumetric Rate Structure for our customers as it provides greater fairness and captures the cost of the water production more accurately. With this, all water customers, with the exception of our high-volume industrial users, will pay the same volumetric rate for each consumption tier. This means if you and your neighbor both use 5,000 gallons in a building period, your volumetric water change will be the same. This puts residents and commercial entities on equitable footing within paying for the treatment of our water and wastewater. This budget does include a $5.08 increase on the regulatory compliance fee, which is directly tied to debt associated with the EPA consent decree work on the wastewater collection system. We are proposing a $1.28 increase on the residential waste collection fee as part of the budget. As a comparison to our solid waste rates for residential pickup of 31,022 customers, we offer a premium service at a considerably low monthly rate that provides two collections per week. As per the budget and tax rate adoption schedule per state statutes, staff is requesting that the city council hold the first of two public hearings today. The staff recommends holding the second public hearing at your next meeting on September 14th. We expect to bring the tax rate and budget to the council for adoption at that meeting.
Like city manager, any questions for Ed before we move into the public hearing? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. I did this in order. Ed, when you were talking about the public safety budget growth, can you point out for everybody the total percentage of this general fund budget and how that is applied towards civil service?
So for civil service, which is going to be your police and fire departments, and so not only, civil service typically refers to the employees, but I'm assuming also you're talking to the full departments, right?
Correct.
So for police and fire department, you can kind of see here as far as just the increases that we've had with that. It is, I think actually there might be a better slide or reference to that. Bear with me for a second, councilman. I do not. So, and let me also then see, then we actually had this from earlier. Behind a wall? Let me get him up here, just because I know that we actually, he has that percentage number.
Yes.
There you are.
There you are. Let me turn over that question. In fact, let me just repeat the question if I can.
Sure.
And then Chief Financial Officer, Kendrick Trimble, will can help with that. And so the question was, what was the percentage of, for police and fire departments in relationship to the full general fund? And as a reference, general fund is the, essentially is for property taxes, sales tax, franchise fees. It's for all the services that do not have a, essentially our enterprise funds or have their own funding stream or source. And so with that...
Public safety is roughly about 65, 67, off the top of my head, 65, 66% of the general fund budget. That doesn't include the transfer outs, but just all the expenditures above the transfer line, it's about 65, 66%.
Perfect. Thank you, Kendrick. I know we had touched on the portion of the public safety budget, but I don't think there was a reference to the percentages and how important the percentage is and how important our focus is on that part of the budget. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, second question, a couple of slides next, the substandard structures portion. Can you explain a little bit about how that process would unfold, what the, what those funds would be used towards, and how that would be implemented?
So with substandard structures, the past direction the city had towards this was primarily towards residential structures in the areas that the Housing and Urban Development have called your moderate to low-income areas. And it had been on residential structures that the use of community development block grant funds, in essence, was being used to be able to help tear down some of those. The city already has a board that has been created, the Neighborhood Revitalization Board, which per, the state of Texas has a whole set of statutes that govern how essentially governmental agencies, especially cities, work on the demolition of private structures. And so as far as with warnings and the amount of time that they have to be able prescribed, to be able to accomplish to kind of fix an item, and then whether or not then the declaration of that the city will have it torn down if progress isn't made towards the remediation of the structure. We haven't really done, though, anything outside of that low to moderate income areas for especially commercial structures, and that's what we're finding more and more of, especially in some of our old areas downtown. For example, you have at least one of those there and some of the other kind of older areas of the community of where you have commercial structures that are sitting there that have deteriorated over time, and there hasn't been someone that's come along or been able to come and take care of it. Usually we also see high amount of crime or homelessness that then also kind of works its way into these buildings, especially with some of the ones we have posted there. The police department have had multiple calls to deal with either drugs, again, or homeless living in there, or fires. You know, the Tyson home that is shown there in four of the pictures is the most prominent one that we can kind of reference in regards to all the different activities that I just may have mentioned, and kind of the difficulties it's creating. So the $200,000 that we're budgeting is really kind of the starting point because we don't necessarily know how far that will get us. But for some of them, such as the bigger one like the Tyson home, that could eat up quite a bit of that, whereas the other ones, some of the other structures, the smaller ones, there's one that's for the cut up in that top kind of right-hand corner, that one could probably come down pretty easily. But we work with the property owners to first give the opportunity for remediation, and if they do not see any progress there, then we bring them forward your Neighborhood Revitalization Board. Your Neighborhood Revitalization Board follows the state law in regards to then the amount of time that they have to make changes, to see progress being made. If no progress is being made, then they can give the order for demolition. The order for demolition, the property owner can demolish the property upon that order being given, but more often is the case, which is why we're starting to put funding towards it, is the city then has to take the responsibility for it, in which case then we will put a lien on the property to try to recover our costs as best we can.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you refresh me, what is that last, that bottom right structure? I don't recognize it.
So the bottom right-hand one is across from Fund Forest Park. It's actually an old hospital.
Yes.
And so, yeah, just over the past couple of decades, it's kind of deteriorated. We've had issues with.
So we don't actually take ownership of that property when we demolish? We apply a lien to the property in the event that it's sold, we can recover, or they can surrender the property to us?
That's a very good point. Yes, at no point does the city actually acquire the property. The city is essentially removing the nuisance that exists on the property.
Right.
And so the property owner, if the property owner wants to give the property to the city to, for forgiveness of the lien, that is an option. Or the city, the property owner and some of our future property owners can pay off the lien at a future date. But it is primarily, you know, the only action we're taking is for the removal of the nuisance. Again, the property stays in the property owner's hands that it belongs to.
Taking that question one step further, if a lien is placed on the property and we able, we are able to recover some funds from the sale of that property, would it then be a snowball effect where we could use those funds for the next project and we don't have to keep dumping money into this, this project?
Exactly. You could then be able to take that and utilize that towards further demolition of properties.
And then my last question or point that I wanted to highlight that I don't think you mentioned, when we were talking about, let me get to the slide. When you were talking about the pay incentive increases for both civil service and employees, one thing I wanted to point out, it's a great focus, obviously, to retain top talent and retain the employees that we have. And one thing I wanted to mention that is not included in these slides is the fact that the city has been such good stewards with taxpayer money that the size of city staff has remained constant since the mid-'80s, even though the city has essentially doubled in size. And I don't know if you want to elaborate anymore on that or bring light to that, but I think that that highlights a unanimous goal of everybody to keep, you know, the belt tied and remain fiscally responsible.
You know, and I appreciate that. That is something of which we look at various first closely, because when you add staff, that is, that becomes an ongoing cost for years and years to come. And so where is the opportunities to outsource activities if possible? Where is the opportunity to use technology? One of the things I always love to highlight is the fact that Benny Yasson Panahi and his IT department have equipped us in ways with technology to be able to get work done rather than having to hire additional people. Now, that can only go so far, and just as we are asking for two additional firefighters with this budget, and y'all did additional police officers and firefighters and solid waste staff over the years, that has been essential because of, with the growth, you are looking at then where there still have to be feet on the ground. You know, technology can get you so far. And so where do you need to expand that to be able to have those boots on the ground, be able to kind of be able to be there for the public in those areas because of that growth? And whether it been, like I said, for utility staff, that's primarily where you've seen your growth has been, police, fire, and utilities, just to be able to keep up with kind of everything that you have. But it's, I know that, you know, it's our, especially kind of back-of-house staff, you know, I won't bring Kendrick back up again for this one, but those, your finance departments, your legal department, dang it, Deborah's already there, but those have not seen that kind of growth that you might have with those other kind of cities because they're being able, we do the emphasis on just how are we out there in the public? And here, like I said, there is quite a bit of outsourcing when needed to be able to kind of have additional help versus hiring somebody to have them in the, there that becomes a continual cost.
Thank you, Ed, for indulging my questions, and Mr. Mayor, allow me a few minutes.
You're done?
I do have one more.
Okay.
When it comes to, as we continue to evaluate our, our pay levels by department, by position and so on, have we adequately budgeted for shock adjustments in the future for 2023?
You know, you've got the shock adjustments for essentially Phase Three and Four that are going to be part of this budget. So that gets the shock adjustment phases that we began a couple of years ago, kind of fully funded and into the organization. One of the things that I cut out of this one, the presentation kind of for timing-wise is, we are going to be, though, doing an evaluation upon existing positions, and which will also look at kind of job families and the pay categories that go with the job family thing. One of the things that has happened over the past year or two has just with wages, especially for different positions, kind of fluctuating and going up so quickly. You know, we saw this with technology, IT staff, GIS staff, engineers, all those that have some of that technical type of training and everything of where, especially when we're hiring them, of having to increase the pay quite a bit in order to be able to attract quality candidates. So now it comes with the cleanup that Regina Moss and her team with Organization Development has to do of looking at those job families, trying to put those back together, and then also on the pay-wise, seeing what kind of, doing the evaluation on that component for this year. And so there's not the piece that then, you know, then funds, then what does that adjustment look like upon that study that you'll probably see in fiscal year '24.
Got you. Thank you. And then one last question. I know that we're offering new health benefit choices for the employees. So, refresh my memory, is there going to be an increase in the current health coverages that we have for our team members?
So for, yeah, for health insurance, this will be, you started last year offering more options for our employees on, as far as on insurance. And so created a more high, as far as different premium levels that they can participate in. So there was a second plan that was opted or created last year. This year is the third plan that we are creating, which is a health savings account or high deductible, high premium, high deductible plan. And so with that one, that then gives the employees another, essentially another option to consider. One of the other things is because of all the shifting that we've done with the insurance program, we're not recommending premium increases for our employees for this year, just so that they can start to, as they then are have that third option that is there, be able to try to determine what is the best option in my own family without having the increase piece that goes with it. We'll probably then in future years, bring back premium increases to go along with the, as far as for the insurance program piece, but for this year, we wanted to kind of keep it flat if we could so that, like I said, employees could have, as they are determining what is the best option for them or their families, kind of have some level of continuity there.
Great. Thank you. And I just, in closing, Mr. Mayor and Council, want to echo Councilman Haney's comments about how we appreciate gratefully the hard work of your team and yourself to bring us such a budget that is fiscally responsible to the citizens that we serve in the community.
It's our pleasure.
Any other comments for the City Manager before we move on? All right.
Thank you.
We will move into...
Public hearing, sir. Is there anybody signed up?
Yes. Let's run ahead. We're moving to the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget. I have one card here from Casey Brown. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Casey Brown. I live at 7721 Cherry Hill Drive in Tyler. I'm here to voice my concern over raising the rates on the water utilities for residents in Tyler. I'm a homeowner, and I also own a commercial property here in Tyler. What's been reported is that the rates are going to go up a minimum $20 per household for water utilities. That may not be much to sum, but it adds up, just like everybody's seen over the last couple of years. Because I own two properties, I'll see $40 added to my expenses monthly. For my home on Cherry Hill, I already am paying an inflated amount of $67 to Liberty Utilities for sewer service. My neighbors behind me and on the other side of my neighborhood, they're on City of Tyler Sewer, but yet Cherry Hill Drive where I live is still on Liberty Utilities paying that ridiculous amount for sewer service. And in the future, that $67 could be raised to well over $100 just for sewer service at my home with Liberty. So in total, for my home water expense, I could be paying more than $200 a month for water and sewer and not necessarily using any more water at my residence than I am right now. In 2016, I believe it was, water rates were raised by about $10 minimum because people weren't watering their yards as much. So there wasn't a whole lot of revenue for water consumption because we had so much rain in the spring and summer. So water rates were raised, and even though consumption has kind of resumed, those, those rates never were dropped, even though it was explained, we got to raise the rate because people aren't using enough water and our budgets are all thrown off. Even though, especially this summer, everybody's been using plenty of water. My business was severely jeopardized by the panic of 2020. I thought my life's work was gone. Fortunately, I live in Texas. Fortunately, I live in Tyler, Texas, and people weren't as fearful as others around the country. Businesses like mine, the entertainment industry, we started to get back on our feet, and then everything starts going up with inflation. Our customers don't necessarily want to pay more for our services, so now we're making less. Utility appraisal for my home, or I'm sorry, the inflated appraisal for my home, I'm definitely paying for, everybody's paying for. It's ridiculous. So I'm being taxed a ridiculous amount for my home, which, as he explained earlier, property taxes make up 31% of the budget, and it's still not enough. As a resident of Tyler who has had too much nonsense to deal with over the last two and a half years, I'm asking you to consider, all of us that need a break, spend a little wiser and help the residents of Tyler. Is now the best time to buy a new truck or a car, for that matter? No, not with all the skyrocketing prices and price gouging. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, just a few things because I didn't include that in there. I don't know if Mr. Brown must have been part of that. So with it, we are in, on your, you're essentially charging for the first 2,000 gallons of water. So if Mr. Brown, for example, was talking about the, the base rate, the first essentially 2,000 includes the base rate, so citizens, businesses, no one's paying for that. So for the cost of the water, we're charging that on. So to kind of give a little bit of example, then you'll have, so he'll see a $6 increase approximately on his water bill for the ability, for the first 2,000 gallons that he's been using, and then, you know, the other amount he's been charged for right there. Typically, you'll also see then on the other side, the wastewater side, it sounds like he won't have that issue because he's on Liberty Hill, or not Liberty Hill, but Liberty Tall Timbers. It will be about a $6 increase there. And then, of course, on the EPA fee, which, you know, will continue to go up because of the consent decree piece, that goes up by $5.08, and then solid waste, which is, this is the second year of the two-year that y'all decided to put in place, because last year you didn't want the increase to be significantly high, would be the $1.28.
All right. Is there anyone else here this morning that would like to speak to this item while we're in the public hearing? Seeing none, we will now close the public hearing, and we'll move on to item 01.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This is a request that the City Council consider adoption of an ordinance approving appointments to the Board of Directors of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three and the Tyler Redevelopment Authority. As you can see here on the map, this is our TERZ III boundary. It is consisting of about 491 acres of land located in the northwest sector of the city along Loop 323. You are probably familiar with some of the more recent developments in this area, North Chase. We've had, you know, several new apartment complexes that have been located along the North Broadway corridor, as well as single-family homes, and there was a new zoning case just today, so that's great. There, the TERZ is set up to provide for specific project costs, including landscaping and greenscape, sidewalks, other utilities, and various other type of infrastructure for this area, and right now... And right now, the TERS account has roughly about $800,000 in the account. So, you know, we have collected some monies to evaluate and look and see if there are opportunities within this TERS boundary to do some improvements. So today, we're asking that the Council recommend, take the recommendation that the City Council adopt the attached ordinance approving appointments, as well as reaffirming the chair for the Board of Directors of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three and the Tyler Redevelopment Authority.
Any questions for Heather?
Move to proof 01.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 02.
All right. Just like the previous item, this is Zone Four. This is our downtown TERS, and we are seeking a approval of appointments for the Board of Directors for the TERS Four. And this is generally bounded by Beckham on the east, Gentry on the north, Palace on the west, and Front on the south. There is about 382 acres contained within this TERS boundary. The goal of this TERS is to continue funding the construction of needed public infrastructure and to encourage private development that will yield additional tax revenue to all local taxing jurisdictions within the TERS Four district, and promoting the creation of mixed-use development consisting of major retail, restaurants, residential, neighborhood, and office. And we are very happy to see some of that activity that's been happening in the downtown area. The City Council is, authorizes the Board of Directors to elect from its members a vice chair, so that could be something you also consider within your motion. But today, we are asking that the City Council adopt the attached ordinance approving appointments to the Board of Directors of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Four, as well as reaffirming the chair.
Any questions for Heather?
Move to proof. Second.
We've got a motion by McGee, second by Winn. Is there anything we need to do in addition, just to their motions?
You could appoint a vice chair. In looking at this list, you could do that.
You're next on the list. You want to be vice chair?
I move to make Robert McGee vice chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion.
And a second.
And a second. That was from Curtis and McKellar. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is that all done? Okay, Deborah?
Congratulations, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
He said, "I think."
Well deserved.
It's a big job. 03.
Good morning, Council, Mayor and Council. David Gibson, I'm the chief building official here in the City of Tyler. I'm here today to request that the City Council consider adoption of an ordinance amending Tyler City Code Chapter Six by updating and amending the provisions in the 2015 International Building Code related to automatic sprinklers in the storage, manufacturing, and display of upholstered furniture and mattresses. Specifically, we're asking Sections 903 dot 2 dot 9, which is Group S1 type occupancies in all its subsections. This request is regarding self-storage rental facilities. The requested amendment will affect only units that are accessible from the outside in our single-story. This will not include the storage units located within a larger single-story or multi-story building whose fire area exceeds 12,000 square feet. Those type of units will still be required to have an automatic sprinkler system. So currently, the 2015 International Building Code requires a Group S1 occupancy to provide an automatic sprinkler system throughout when one of five conditions exists. Today, we're speaking of Condition Number Five, which states Group S1 type occupancies used for the storage of upholstered furniture or mattresses exceeding 2,500 square feet will be required to be sprinkled. So in 2021, the International Building Code has changed that up a little bit. And now, the City of Tyler has not adopted the 21 code, so we're still under the 15 code, but we're asking for this. Under the same section, 903 dot 2 dot 9, it has reduced the number of conditions from the five to four. They have completely removed the fifth condition that I spoke of before in the 2015 edition. It is, in its place, they have created a completely new subsection, Section 903 dot 2 dot 9 dot 4, and changed the verbiage to include fire area instead of square foot. The code now also includes an exception. In the 21 code states, 903 dot 2 dot 9 dot 4, an automatic sprinkler system shall be provided throughout a Group S1 fire area where the area used for the storage of upholstered furniture or mattresses exceed 2,500 square feet. And they have added an exception to that, and the exception states self-storage facilities not greater than one story above great plane, where all storage spaces are accessed directly from the outside. In addition, we are also requesting that Section 903 dot 2 dot 4 pertaining to Group F, which is a factory style, occupancies, and Section 903 dot 2 dot 7 pertaining to Group M, a mercantile or retail occupancy, be amended as well. The requirements of the 21 edition of the International Building Code, 903 dot 2 dot 4 in all its subsections, and 903 dot 2 dot 7 in all its subsections. The 21 edition of the International Building Code has addressed these occupancies in the same manner as an S1 type occupancy, by eliminating Condition Four of each section and replacing it with a new subsection. On July 13th of '22, in the TDC conference room, we convened the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Of the seven board members, we had four members present and one member attended virtually. The amendments were discussed extensively and voted on individually, and all required amendments passed by a five-to-zero vote in favor of moving forward for City Council consideration.
Any questions for David?
Two questions for you, David. Existing buildings, are they grandfathered in?
They will be. It will not affect existing buildings at all.
And then the sprinklers wet and dry chemical?
Yes.
Okay.
And what this will affect is the single stories, self-storage that you drive up to, you get out of your vehicle and you're right there at the door. Those, according to the 15 code, must be sprinkled. In 21, they relaxed that requirement, realizing that that fire load is not quite as there the way it was. So it will just affect those buildings. It will not affect the conditioned spaces that, where you go into the building, and the ground spaces are conditioned, and, you know, you test it from the inside. It will not affect those.
Got a related question? Who's, is the body in the city that recommends updating the code edition?
Who has, as far as this goes?
No, no, no. To like the 21, the move from 15 to whatever.
Who started that? We have some...
Who would do it? That's my question.
You have a kind of a subcommittee, in fact, Mr. Mosaic was here earlier, he kind of heads that up for you, of kind of a UDC, kind of the UDC kind of review committee that will take a look at this. And so it becomes something where, especially the last time y'all made any convert, changes on the building codes, or we switched on those years. We had a pretty kind of extensive discussion with, especially the development community and others, so they'd understand and kind of go through that and know what the different pieces are. For these, especially, you've got these going on, and then also, I know Train has something that's coming down the line that will come back to you as well. And so for that one, y'all have, what was that, just kind of a, is that a UDC review committee?
That was a variance that was granted specifically for Train.
Oh, okay. So that one was actually handled differently.
So it would come from that body?
Yes.
I mean, I think it's good that, you know, we spotted something and addressed it. I don't think it's great that we have to do that. You know, that's the problem, getting behind in the code.
Yeah, the one that forced us to, especially, you know, this one, this one, I think, kind of came about because of requests, right? So they could look at. And then the last time y'all really made the change was because the state of Texas said, "Yeah, we're not supporting the code, the building code that you were under, the International Building Code." So it kind of pushed us to have to, and I was in the state of Texas, but nobody was even providing materials that still adhered to those. So sometimes the economy or the state pushes us to also have to update our building codes. We're sometimes a little bit behind on those.
Makes it tough for builders.
Actually, the builders, I always seem to think they like it because they don't have to go to the more rigorous ones.
All right. Any other questions for David before we move on?
Move to proof 03. Second.
A motion by Curtis, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. Thank you. Go for it.
Joey, if you want to just tell them it's the same thing.
Okay. But tell them your name.
Morning. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, thank you for allowing me to speak. This, since we just changed the building code, I am asking that we mirror the fire code. It's basically the same thing. The recommendation is, is recommended that City Council adopt an ordinance amending the Tyler City Code Chapter Six by updating and amending the provisions in the 2015 International Fire Code related to automatic sprinklers in the storage, manufacturing, and display or sale of upholstered furniture or mattresses.
I think you should read all the changes.
Yes, sir.
Was that a motion for approval?
Yeah, make that proof of four.
Motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Lance, before you start...
Yes, sir.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, sir, please do.
I'm sorry for everybody that's hanging out for two hours, but I need to walk around.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what somebody...
All right. We got the, we got the magic light going on back there. It's time to go.
You hit the hammer. Why'd you hit the hammer?
Hammer down. Good morning, Lance.
Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to speak on agendas item M1 and M2. I'm going to group those together for pointed discussion and, you know, at the end, we'll make a recommendation for both of those items at the same time. I do want to, this is a sensitive, M2 is a sensitive agenda item. So I want to make aware that we do have Health First here, which is our incumbent TPA Cindy Klein and Ashley Fiesel. So we do expect them to make some public comments today. And then we also have United Healthcare UMR in the room, Dennis Ellis and Kelly Melander. Dennis is the Vice President of Sales and Account Management for United Healthcare and Kelly Melander is the Vice President of Account Management for UMR. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. So we went out to bid, we go out to bid for our self-funded health plan every three years. So I've been working with the city since 2016. We went out to bid for effective date 2017. So we remained with Health First for three years, 17, 18, 19. Went out to bid for services again in 2020. And we've served our three-year contract once again with Health First, 2020, 21, and 22. And then in 17, item M1, we have a separate agenda item there because we do carve out the pharmacy. The city has a direct contract with the pharmacy benefit manager, in this case, Surpass RX. It's been a very, a very good decision that we carved that out. The city saved millions of dollars during that timeframe. And so we've, we've kept that arrangement in place. So just a couple of notes here. We sent the RFP for both agenda items out on March 30th of this year. There's a long lead time for this process, obviously leading into open enrollment. And that RFP closed on April 26th. So since April 26th, we've been evaluating all of these vendors. We did a best and final offer with several vendors that took us through May. And then, as you can see on this next page, we've had four committee meetings. So we met with one committee on May 26th, another on June 14th, July 29th, and then we had the latest one on August 16th. So we've basically touched everybody in the city about these RFPs and, and, you know, have had consensus about, you know, the direction that we want to take. So as a reminder, RFP 20-26 is for our medical administrative services. So basically paying our claims, access to the provider network. We have a separate administrator for our dental claims. So we, Delta Dental of Texas is our administrator for dental. We, we made that change in 2017 and that's been, been a good change for the city as well. Short-term disability, so we have a self-funded short-term disability program administered by Health First. But, but essentially the city pays the claims if an employee goes out on short-term disability and qualifies for short-term disability. We do some other administrative items. We have pre and post-65 retirees. So we need a vendor partner that does retiree billing. Health First has done that for us for many years. Cobra Administrative Services for employees that leave the city to continue their Cobra. We have flexible spending accounts that we need. That's a tax-free benefit to the employees where they can pre-tax through their paychecks. And lastly, and the city manager pointed this out, we're going to be introducing a health savings account on January 1st. We're going to be promoting that during open enrollment. We're very excited about that. Most of your peers offer a health savings account with a high deductible health plan. And we need an administrator to be able to, it's basically a bank account for the employees to fund, to have their money in a bank account to use if they are on that qualified high deductible health plan. And then, as I mentioned, RFP 20-27 is separate for pharmacy benefit manager. We've got a broad response from the market. The city of Tyler is a coveted, you know, account for the entire market. So all the major medical carriers, Blue Cross, United Healthcare, Cigna, Aetna quoted on your business, as well as Health First, the incumbent, and TML, who uses Blue Cross for their administrative services in their network. We had a number of dental bids, as well as you can see, we got, get great coverage from the market. A number of administrators to do our Cobra flexible spending account, retiree billing. Short-term disability, I'm going to talk about that for a minute because there's very few vendors that can accommodate our need for administrative services only on the short-term disability. And pharmacy, we got a lot of pharmacy quotes. So we had several people no bid, but, you know, once again, we got broad response from the people that we wanted to on this RFP. So a very thorough evaluation was done. All right, I'm going to talk just, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on the administrative costs. I was just doing a little math here on the budget for the city. You know, I'm just, $12 million budget roughly is what we spend for active, our active employees' healthcare spend, and that's divided between the city and the employees. We have to pay administrative costs. Currently, those are being paid to Health First for essentially everything except for dental. We do pay Delta Dental for the dental administrative costs. But as you can see here at the bottom, between the two organizations, we pay $450,000 in administrative cost. We did, you know, we do have some slight increases to those costs for 2023. And UMR, who we're making a recommendation on today, has a very similar cost structure. They've given us some credits. You'll see down here at the bottom, they've given us some credits, $100,000 in year one and two additional years at $35,000. So they're, they're incentivizing us financially through these administrative fees. But this is not really a rationale why the city administration and McGriff are making recommendations for UMR over Health First. This makes up 2% to 3% of your overall cost for the health plan. What we did, though, is we had to evaluate everything holistically, and I'm going to get into the details of that. There's a lot of additional things that need to be considered. We just want to make sure UMR, Blue Cross, whoever it is, is in line with what we're paying today for our administrative services. All right, so I want to highlight the best and final offers that were made. It really came down to Health First, which we've had an incredible relationship with for a long time. You know, there, there's no bones about that. They've been a great partner of ours for a long time. But we evaluated Health First, UMR, and Cigna. Cigna was eliminated pretty early in the process for some things that they fell short on. They couldn't administer for us. But the details of the best and final offer are three years of rate guarantee and performance guarantees by both organizations. UMR has offered the $100,000 in year one and $35,000 for year two and three. Once again, that, that's going to help us go through a transition, assuming approval today, and pay for some things that we may need as that, as that change happens. I think it's very important, the network is the reason I'm up here today and going to be making a recommendation for UMR. For a long time, the city employees, and once again, this, this came through our committee meetings, the city employees want broad access to provider coverage out here in East Texas. They want to be able to go to UT Health, they want to be able to go to Christus, and they don't want any restraints as it relates to that. So one of the things that we had to do is we had to evaluate what Health First option is for that and what United Healthcare's options are. And we did a repricing of claims. So when I say repricing, we're not taking their word for it, that they've got good provider discounts and good contracts with the provider community out here. We're actually making them reprice their claims on their contracts. And UMR did bode well there. They, they had almost a 72% discount off of bill charges from what we reviewed versus Health First at 68. Now, there's not a lot of claims, as you can imagine, going to Christus right now. We cannot go to Christus in the Platinum Direct network. There are some one-off scenarios where a member goes to Christus and then Health First negotiates that individual deal with Christus. That's by and large how, how that happens. So we do expect as, if, if the award happens today for UMR, that employees are going to, you know, they're going to see broad access to the provider community out here in East Texas, as well as nationwide. United Healthcare's network is nationwide. One of the other considerations, we currently use United Healthcare outside of the seven-county region out here with Platinum Direct. We are losing that with Health First on January 1st. So that was another consideration. We have a lot of claims going to Dallas, we have claims going to Houston. We need a strong network in those areas as well. So that was one of the points of consideration in looking at UMR. With Delta Dental, on the dental, we got the three-year rate guarantee. Once again, they've been a great partner of ours. We, we have no interest in, in moving that, recommending an award there. On the short-term disability, I mentioned, UMR and Health First are really the two partners that can do, you know, really the short-term disability administration and the retiree billing. UMR is very good at the retiree billing piece. And Health First has been, once again, a great partner for us over the years as it relates to the retiree billing, taking care of the pre and post-65. So that had to be a part of our consideration. And then the Cobra and flexible spending account administration would be going to UMR as well under our recommendation. On 2027, we are simply recommending a renewal of Surpass RX. They've been a great partner of ours since 2017. They're increasing their rebate revenue, they're improving their contract that we have with them. It'll be minimal disruption on that piece as it relates to pharmacy for the employees, the spouses, children. So they're familiar with Surpass and they also provided the best terms during the RFP process. So once again, I know there, there's a lot of questions and I want to open it up for questions. But we are, as I've made comments, we're recommending that on M2 or RFP 2026 that we move our medical administration services to UMR. It will include telemedicine under that contract. Dental will remain with Delta Dental. And then the short-term disability, the retiree billing, Cobra flexible spending account, and health savings account, all of that will be moved under UMR and Optin as well. So as I stated, the rationale there, the network is the biggest piece. Going back to the timing, March 30th, April 26th. Best and final offer, May, June, July, August 18th. We make a call to Health First to let them know that we're recommending UMR for you today. The first time we ever hear about any negotiations with Christus, any negotiations with groups in Dallas. We don't have any confirmation of any signed agreements that are in place and there's nothing for me to evaluate. There's not, there's no financial information for me to evaluate. So at this point, there, there would be no change from those things that started taking place last Thursday. There's nothing that I've seen that would have me ask you to table this agenda item. There's no, there, there's nothing here that is going to change, you know, my recommendation to move to UMR on RFP 2026 or M2.
So Lance, there's, there's the April 26th due date for the RFP. Is there a date associated with the best and final offer? Or is that just kind of a moving target?
That, that's a great question. I actually forgot to write that down yesterday when I was putting all these dates together. Mayor, the typical process is April 26th due date, submissions here into purchasing. My account manager was out here to pick up those proposals that day. We ship them back to the office. There's probably a two-week turnaround time on getting that information in our spreadsheets and in our evaluation formats. So my guess here is mid-May. And that process, we're talking about administrative services. That's the only thing that can be really changed here. We're talking about a process of a week that that was probably requested to be turned around. And so at, at, at a worst-case scenario, we're probably talking about late May when those best and final offers were submitted so that we could start preparing for these committee meetings that started. We had a committee meeting on May 26th. So we had all the information we needed at that time or the information that was, you know, was requested. And once again, there, there's, there's been no, there's been no secrets. I've had a great relationship with Health First since I was hired by the city in 2016. But there's been no secrets about our desire as the city to go to a broad network with contracts that are already in place.
All right, any questions for Lance before we move on to Bob and?
I have one. You mentioned that Christus is not part of UMR. Is that correct?
No, they, they are part, United, so UMR is a subsidiary of United Healthcare.
Okay.
United Healthcare has 100,000 members out here in East Texas and Christus is a part of their network.
It is.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, okay.
Lance, I appreciate working with you on this and hearing your diligence through these committee meetings that you have presented to us.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate that. One question you already addressed, based on the repricing review on claims instead of the discount analysis hypothetical, so I appreciate you addressing that. One thing I want to point out and ask you about your recommendation, it doesn't have anything to do with any pass-through payments or rebates or kickbacks to McGriff. Y'all get paid purely on the contract that you have with the city and not based on any kickbacks or anything like that, do you?
Councilman, that's, that's a great question. The arrangement that I've had with the city since 2016 when we were hired, and this is a pretty typical arrangement, is on a fee for service. So I don't get paid anything outside of the fee that the city manager signs a contract with for me every year. I, I'm not paid on anything else related to the health plan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for Lance? All right, I'm going to call Bob Brewer up first. Cassandra, we might need a timer on Bob. Can you, can we get your name and address for the record? I should have it memorized.
Bob Brewer, 1800 D. Charles, precinct chairman of precinct three.
So anyways, thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Dr. McKeller, for that heartfelt and impactful prayer. I just loved it. It's one of the best that I've heard here. I'm here to comment on agenda item M1 and the pharmacy benefits thing. I pray that your decision today and your actions going forward will not contradict the first page of U.S. law. The page that our founders, legal scholar, said that no human laws should be suffered to contradict these. That's the first page of U.S. law. Where these are the absolute foundation of U.S. law, which includes our patient-doctor relationships and how they choose the medications for their treatment. These laws of nature and of nature's guide are essential to our liberty and to our unalienable right to life. Our liberty and our unalienable rights have been under attack for the last three years. Our liberty and our unalienable rights have been under attack for the last three years. It is time for all of us to abide by our oath that we swore and arrest these attacks on our first laws. On our first laws and our doctor-patient relationships on how we choose and what medications we choose to protect our life. Your decision today and your actions going forward will ensure that these attacks will, in fact, be arrested. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Next we have Cindy Klein. Morning, Cindy.
Good morning.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, Cindy Klein, 6052 Brenmark Court, Tyler. Good afternoon. Thank you, guys, for hearing me out. We have humbly and honorably served the city for over 25 years on the health plan. And even before that, as a matter of fact, the network that you're on, we were asked to build by the city of Tyler, and we did. That was when ETMC was here, and so ETMC offered rates at Medicare rates, and we've saved the city over $50 million for the two times that you've been with Health First because of those rates. When the UT Health East Texas Venture happened over four and a half years ago, I came in to run Health First. We are owned by UT Health East Texas, and so part of the information I'd like to share today is information that came after the RFP. We've known, whenever the city has asked us to do stuff, we have absolutely done everything in our power to achieve that. We built, obviously, the network. We have, we have hosted all the health fairs, we've brought education, we've brought all the resources from the University of Texas to the city. We have done your disability, we've done your retiree billing. We're here local, your retirees come to our office, pay their bills. So, we've been a really good partner, and no disrespect to Lance and their team, I'm not up here to say they didn't do a fantastic job. We've loved working with them. We just could not disclose any of the information during the RFP. We have tried, if you can imagine, if you've been here any time, and you guys all have, ETMC and Trinity Mother Frances were at war for a very long time, and we did not have the opportunity to give you those rates on the ADP network and include Christus. So, over the past four and a half years, and with the medical school coming, both systems are starting to work together on some really big projects. And this is the first time I've been able to go to my boss, who is the market leader for UT Health East Texas, Donald Baker, and ask him if we can go to Christus and invite them to offer the city a direct contract. That means both hospitals will be working with the city for preferred rates. And we've been a partner with UMR and UHC. That's how we had UHC as your rapid network everywhere else. Last year, they turned our contract, and so we're here talking about now just 15% of your claims that go out of this area. So, we're hoping, and I've already talked to Chris Glenny, you can confirm, I have a meeting with him next week to actually start this discussion. And I know it's late in the game, and so I'm not asking for you guys to give us another three-year contract, as these are typically. I'm asking you to consider a one-year extension. And I've actually guaranteed that if we can't fulfill everything that we've offered, and we have in the past, so you have no reason to doubt us, that we will pay for you to move to UMR the next year. We just want one year to show that we can get you direct access to Christus, all their facilities and providers, and that the University of Texas, East Texas, Dr. Julie Philly, has connected us with UT Southwestern to look at a direct contract there. Not only for our employees, because we understand the same situation, we have to ship people out, but with Christus and UT both here collaborating with the medical school, we're not gonna have to ship people out. There's a whole initiative for pediatric programs here, so we're not gonna have to ship people to Dallas, to Children's Medical. And, you're right, UMR is the biggest in the world. They're the biggest TPA there is. I've been to their facility, they used to do our backend claims paying. They're in Wisconsin, they're a fantastic company. But, we're here locally, we're here locally to provide your service. Anytime the administration needs help, we're right here. We send five of our team members to your open enrollment, we do your education, and so I'm just asking for a one-year extension so we can prove out that the 50-plus million we've saved you in our, in our past, we can continue to do with direct contracts.
Questions or comments for Cindy? I'll start. You know, you guys have done stuff for the city, what, since 1997?
1997 and even before that. The city left for a brief period of time and then came back.
And, you know, it's a substantial amount of time, and it's a long time. I know there's great relationships and all that. And where I struggle with this, I'm just gonna jump right in there.
Please do.
Where I struggle is with some of the dates, and especially the best and final offer date. And if you look at all the people that bid on the administrative services, I mean, everybody played by the same rules.
They did.
And so, here at the finish line, we're talking about...
Extension of a year.
Extension of time because we were unable to play by the rules. But, that's really, I hate to say, that's not our problem.
And that's why I was telling Lance and the city, I would hate for the city, and this is honestly, to miss out on the very best rates. I know our rates for our facilities are better than, and Lance can tell you, you have enjoyed the very best rates of any client that Health First has. And so, and then we have to move all the retirees, we have to move all the disability, we have to move everything that's been in place, and I'm just asking for a one-year extension because, as you know, what's happening with both health systems is so fluid here, and we could not, could not say during the RFP, these things are happening. As a matter of fact, I didn't get approval until, you can ask Donald Baker, I didn't get approval until Monday of that week. So, to even approach and have this conversation with Christus, and I have since, as soon as I was given permission, and they have agreed to the dialogue. I'm not asking, again, for a three, I'm not asking for a three-year deal for you to say no to this. I'm asking for extended time to proof it out because we have actually provided everything we've been asked for the city over 25 years and more. That's all, that's really, we're just asking for the consideration with new developments, and I would, you know, just, you have the, both health systems collaborating for the first time, and with the medical school, I would hate, I just would hate to move and then not be able to offer the local service and the local rate, the contracts.
But, with UMR, the employees, they can go to Christus, they can go to UT Health?
That's right. And we're proposing that, too.
Or they can go to Dallas?
And they could do that now.
And their deductible would be the same?
Absolutely.
Whether you're there or whether you're here?
Yes, absolutely. We're the ones that put, we're the ones that did this contract together with United Healthcare and UMR. We were in business with them. Like I said, they know all of our rates, they know exactly what our rates are on our network, and they knew they had this business. They called our corporate office in June and told them they already have the city business. So, I, you know, we had a very deep relationship with them. Like I said, they did all of our claim paying. The only reason they did not take the city in the first contract six years ago was because you guys had Surpass, which was owned by Healthcare Highways, and UMR refused to administer the plan at that time because of Surpass.
The question that I have is, and I'm for buying local, but the question I have is, what is your status for getting into Christus right now?
Right now, Chris Glenny and I have a meeting next week to discuss this direct contract, and I would expect the city to be there to negotiate the rates directly because it's their contract with Christus, not ours. So, what wouldn't happen before is on the network we built for the city, since ETMC and UT have given the city such favorable rates, the trade-off for that was that Christus wasn't an option, right? And now UT is saying, all right, we'll let you stay on that preferred network and get a direct contract with Christus on top of that, and we'll administer both. And so, you will have choice, plus the leveraging power, and you can call Chris Glenny right now and ask him if he is open to negotiating with the city, and he is. And you can also call Donald Baker, the market president of UT, and he is allowed this direct contract.
Which you already have with a proposal from UMR.
Excuse me?
The proposal from UMR has already, has that all wrapped up and already put together?
It does, but you can't negotiate your rates with UMR that hospitals do. The hospitals negotiate those rates, and right now, UT has served UHC a term notice with the intent to renew, but you, I guess, what they can say is they can negotiate a direct contract, too. That is possible.
Lance, do you want to kind of address that?
Yeah.
If you don't mind coming up.
Y'all want to finish, I mean, y'all want to finish asking your question, Cindy, I guess we can have it backed up. I want to make sure there's two sides to every discussion item here.
After we hear.
UMR, right now, has a contract?
Right now.
With UT Health.
Yep.
Right now, they have a contract with Christus.
Right now.
So...
We're not speaking any hypotheticals.
We have the two knowns.
This is a very, obviously concerning thing to talk about negotiating contracts after an award.
Well, and that's where I'm struggling, and with all due respect, you know, with Christus, you know, I'm unaware of any ongoing negotiations to have Christus join the UT Health network. I mean, I haven't, I don't have that known. There's a known, there's an unknown.
Other than you can absolutely, again, this was just us giving permission to do that, and Chris Glenny saying, yes, we would like to negotiate with the city. So, if you want to call Chris Glenny or talk to Donald Baker, you can do both of those. And I can forward you the discussion with Christus and Chris Glenny. You know, we're gonna try to obviously come to the table that want to negotiate the very best rates with them since they're part of the community and we're with the city. So, what I'm saying is, you're right, we don't have those contracts, those contracts that United Healthcare has with the city. Our contracts with UT Health are way better than the city. Our contracts are better on the ADP network with UT Health East Texas than they are with United Healthcare. I do know that because we're owned by UT Health. And then your ability to negotiate with Christus can save you even more because those contract rates are already set. And so, what I'm saying is, we have, and you're right, those contracts are in place, but everything that we've asked to do, we have done for the city. And so, we are saying, and I am saying, that if we can't get this done the way you want, we will pay the next-year runout for you. We are guaranteeing it won't cost you a thing to move to UMR, and I'm just asking for a one-year extension since this came at the last hour for the first time in history that UT Health would allow Christus on top of this network. And I would certainly hate for, hate for you guys to miss out on that opportunity.
But if you had done everything the city asked you to do in the RFP, you would have Christus as part of your network.
Well, I will tell you that UT and Christus have, I can't control their negotiations and their negotiation, negotiating around the medical school and what, and what they can do together. So, I can't, I couldn't control that, and I certainly wasn't going to say in that RFP that that was approved when I didn't have the approval until late.
But I thought it was stated that you did carry out everything that the city had asked you to do, you carried it out.
Over the past years, that's why I'm asking you in a good faith to give us a one-year extension to show that when, that we can now do all of these things. So, when asked to do, and I'm saying that in our past 25 years, you asked us to build a network, we did. You asked us to give preferred rates, we gave Medicare rates for, until the last four years, and now we're well below any major network rate. You asked us to get, build the portal for you, we did. You asked us to bring education, we brought diabetes university, we brought education to your employees on how to read claims. We put together, like I said, it's a 27-level retiree plan. We meet with your retirees when they come to our office, we explain what's going on with their plans and when they have an increase. So, I mean, we've been good stewards, we're here to offer the service, and now, for the very first time, we can offer the choice.
Mr. Mayor, point of inquiry for Councilman Curtis's amusement, using Robert's rules. And this might be a question more directed towards Ms. Pullum. Can we legally entertain what they are offering when we have an RFP out there and responses to an RFP when this wasn't, their offer wasn't responsive to an RFP?
You know, it would depend on how, what the RFP actually says normally. We have language that says we can reject all responses and bids and start over. We have that, we have that option.
And you do have the extension. We work with other municipalities, and you can extend a contract for one year after an RFP, or just extend it, the county just did it as well.
Lance, will there be a local office here?
Yeah. Um, UMR, United Healthcare, has, like I said, 100,000 members in East Texas that hold the United Healthcare card, and they've got a number of clients out here, but it would be serviced out of Dallas, North Dallas. I want to make a couple more comments here just to let the city council understand what we're talking about here. We're talking about a contract that hasn't been negotiated yet. If we negotiate a good contract with Christus, it'll be on par with United Healthcare, right? We got 100,000 members out here, that's a lot of negotiating power for United Healthcare, right? So, if we negotiate a really good contract, we're gonna be on par with what my recommendation is. If we negotiate a bad contract and start sending our employees there, that is detrimental to our health plan. And we're talking about minimum hundreds of thousands of dollars with the possibility of going millions of dollars over our projected budgets with a bad contract. Once again, that the city council, we haven't even evaluated anything yet. There's nothing to evaluate. So, we're asking you to blind, what Cindy's doing here, she's asking you to blindly accept a one-year extension with administrative fees on the line to, what I pointed out during the, my presentation, that's two percent, the annual costs are 2% of your total administrative budget. I mean, that's a very, if we miss the mark here and she has to pay for our runout fees, $40,000, $50,000, that, we appreciate that, but we could lose hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars with negotiating a bad contract with Christus when the recommendation on the table, we have everything that we need. Christus, when the recommendation on the table, we have everything that we need baked in. It would be, with the exception of local service, and I, we have talked to every single committee throughout this process. We have an incredible account executive on this account right now, the best we've ever had, and they do have a local service out here, and we have taken that into consideration with every single committee we've met with. And we're going to hold UMR to high standards if you approve their contract today. I have a very good relationship with them, I have a number of accounts with them, the Grift nationally has an incredible relationship. We will hold them to account, or they will, I will be back in front of you making a recommendation to fire them, to move to someone else.
It's a three-year contract, is that correct?
It's a three-year agreement with, you know, with, we, we have the ability to get out of that contract at any time. That's just the maximum terms of the agreement, you know, if we, for whatever reason, for example, you know, a, a network issue, we would be back in front of the council, you know, making recommendations for changes there.
And council, I mean, this is, because it's a three-year agreement, we go through, do RFPs pretty much at the end of each of those terms, and so I know that since I've been here, we've, this would be at least the second or third time we've gone through this process. That, you know, we appreciate Health First, you know, their concerns and their opportunities there. It's, you know, just, to have legally enforceable documents takes, contracts takes a good, long period of time. And so in this three-year period, if Health First wanted to pursue that even further, that would be a great opportunity for them to try to put together. So, the next time the RFP goes out, it is there, and they can be able to have something that'd be competitive with UMR, UHC's contract.
And can I say, one thing I'd like to say is, you're not blindly going with our, our proposal. We have 25 years of history, and, and millions and millions of dollars of savings toward the city for what we've been able to do. It's not blindly. And I, I know for a fact, our rates to UT Health and the contracts you already have are much better than UHC. And there's a term letter on the table to UHC right now from UT Health. What you can guarantee with us is that no network is going to term one of the hospitals because they're your contracts. So, and we're still guaranteeing that you're going to have a national network with Cigna, and that we're going to go after contracts with our relationship with UT, with UT Southwestern. So it's not like you're not going to have a great network wrapped around this network. And you're going to have the opportunity to negotiate your rates with your, with these local institutions versus UHC, or the other big carriers that do it on your behalf, or may term. And you see that happen all the time, with UHC turning Memorial Hermann and other big institutions, when they don't get the increases or decreases. That's just what happens on networks, right? The, the, the networks don't want to pay as much, the hospitals need more, but you are controlling your contract with Christus and the rates, not UHC. So, like I said, I, we just are asking for an extension, and, so that we can prove it out, and I, no way, I totally understand the timing and the, and why this is late and 11th hour, but again, I don't have the information, and you know the healthcare organizations in this town, and with the medical school coming, what we can do when we collaborate for the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak for a moment. As past chair of the chamber, nobody could be more, I, I echo Councilman McKeller's sentiments that there's not anyone sitting on council that's not a buy local first person. But the RFP was created by the consultant, it was vetted by the committee, you guys were unresponsive. The most exciting thing out of all of your presence here today is the fact that you're passionate about the partnership now, and the dialogue that you have between your two entities with Christus. But, Mr. Mayor, we have an RFP that's been accepted, and I think that it's time for the council to take action and honor that RFP, and if there's no further discussion, I'd like to offer a motion.
Alright, we have a motion.
Do we have to vote on these separately?
Oh yeah, this is, we'll vote on M1 first.
This one is the pharmacy benefit manager, so we're, we're making a recommendation to approve on M1, surpass RX for a three-year contract with the City of Tyler.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Move to approve M1, yes.
Alright, we got a motion by Westbrook, seconded by Haney, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now, now vote on M2.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to approve M2.
I second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, seconded by Haney, any further discussion?
I mean, I just want to say on the, on the M2 is, if we're going to have a consultant, we should listen to the consultant. You know, it should go through that process, it shouldn't be an in-run or a fine, you know, a decision at the last minute. If we don't want to have a consultant, then we can do something different, but as long as we're going to pay to have a consultant, that's the way.
Thank you, council.
This process should go.
Alright, so we've got a motion.
Can I just add one other thing as well of that? I, I'd like to see, I think that we have a great healthcare system, I think it's too pricey, and we need to work to drive down the cost of healthcare.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Alright, so we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Make this a little lighter.
Approved.
Approved, yeah.
I will do my best. Good morning, ma'am, council. This item is in regards to Nobly Young Park, but before I get started with the item before you today, I do want to clarify just a few things. We brought to you a contract to enter into an agreement with Garrett and Associates back in May. That contract was specifically for the trail. They built a eight-foot-wide, one-mile trail around Nobly Young Park. The contract included demo of the old trail, tree removal, grain site restoration, construction of a new trail, and installation of the benches and trash receptacles. I am here to let you guys know that the trail is 100% completed. It looks amazing, those photos up are recently from the completion. The only thing that we have not done just yet is installed the benches and the trash receptacles, because we are waiting for those to come in. The second thing is, I want to go ahead and just note that SCI Construction and Garrett and Associates have actually merged, so if you see SCI and Garrett, they're one and the same now. We put, which brings me to the item before you today, so, we put a notice out to bidders in the paper on August the 10th and August the 17th for a pavilion, a 30 by 30 pavilion with a restroom. We, only one bid actually came in, and the reason that it wasn't actually noted in your packet is because we opened the bids yesterday, so I apologize for that not being in. But the only bid that we got was from SCI Construction. It is, so I'm here before you to recommend that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to award bid number 20-046 for Noble Young Park for construction of a new pavilion and restrooms, to SCI Construction to furnish all necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and, and labor in the amount of $251,450.
Any questions for Leanne?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, seconded by Curtis, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sorry everybody left during your presentation.
Is that going to be up in time for your meeting out there, brother?
I'm hoping, labor day.
Okay, only people that care are left.
Okay, right. I'll still try and be quick, how about that?
He's leaving.
Well, this, this item, M4, well, good afternoon, council. Item M4 is engineering services contract with KSA for the Westside wastewater treatment plant administration and lab building. So, this building was originally constructed in 1966. Influent Lift Station is actually on the, in the basement of this administration building. There was also a locker room and a lab in that initial one. There was a two-story addition in 1990. There have been high levels of hydrogen sulfide introduced to this admin building out at Westside, basically due to the proximity to the Influent Lift Station being in the basement. It's, if you can see in the green square, that's where it's located right now. So it's just north of the primary, or of the trickling filters, and south of the primary, the primary clarifier. So, a computer in this building literally has a life expectancy of about six to 12 months because of that high hydrogen sulfide. We have been monitoring the levels to ensure, you know, worker safety, staff safety, but there's always a potential for long-term exposure concerns, and of course, then this, the issue with the computers as well. So basically, we want to relocate and build a new one up on the northwest side, which is where that, that red square is, on that aerial. So, this, so obviously there was a need to replace and relocate the building. The new building will have much-needed office space in it, as well as a lab, locker room, admin area, and a meeting room. So, the cost of the work of the engineering is $467,700. So I'm here to request that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with KSA for the Westside wastewater treatment plant administration building project in the amount of $467,700.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve M4.
Second.
Motion by McGee, seconded by Winn, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Where's your baby?
She's, she's at daycare right now.
Okay, go ahead.
So, moving on to item M, M5, this is a bid award for the sanitaries who are right-of-way clearing. So we have ongoing right-of-way clearing and maintenance for Tyler Water Utilities to maintain access to our sanitary sewer system and assets, manholes, gravity lines. This project was set up in four different priorities. The priorities were based on the current condition of the easement itself, and what are, how urgent our need was to access some of these areas. Priority one has some areas that are in the main interceptors that go to each of the different treatment plants. So, sealed bids were open on August night of this year at 2:00. Total of two bids were received. Lone Star Land Enhancement was the low bidder and the recommended contractor. So my recommendation is to ask the city council to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Lone Star Land Enhancement in the amount of $3,678,365.44 sent to pre- remediation group for manhole, that is not right, for the, excuse me, for the right-of-way clearing project.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve M5.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, seconded by McKeller, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
M6.
I'll say good afternoon also.
Yes, sir.
So, let me call up, that's okay. I want to, I'm here to request the city council authorize city manager to execute a contract with, with Benchmark Design Group for additional services. Thank you. Additional services in the amount not to exceed $45,000 for construction inspection services on the Cloverdale drainage project. Just a little bit of history, I won't give too much detail, but on July 10th to 2019, the council awarded the engineering design contract to Benchmark for the Cloverdale project. And as you may know, or may remember, but with limited staffing we've had in the engineering department over many years, that we have relied on the construction designers, the design engineers for our resident project representative and main point of contact out in the field. So, well, they had originally $55,000 in their contract, but we have, we're wanting, we've run into just more things out of the field and just some more, just due to the complexity of the project, we've just, they've been utilized more than originally anticipated. So we were wanting to add an initial $45,000 to their fees. And what, I want to emphasize though, that this is a, this is an hourly contract with not to exceed, so we will, may or may not use all that $45,000. Be really quick, I just want to kind of, this is just to kind of remind you what the Cloverdale project really is, with the six-foot diameter pipe for a lot of the ways, and any questions?
Any question for Darian?
Move to approve M6.
Second.
Motion by Winn, seconded by Westbrook, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Darian. My call.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I am honored to be the last item before the consent agenda, because clearly you wanted to keep me around as long as possible. The item that we have for you today is consideration of a downtown Tyler traffic study, and this is the culmination of a lot of steps that have been taken for quite a while. The Smith County, whenever they were looking at doing the new courthouse, they hired a consulting firm to do a downtown study that just really focused on the square itself, as far as what should be the future traffic improvements in that area. The City of Tyler, through the Main Street Department, also recently hired a firm called Tool Design Group, who is right now working on a plan for downtown that's looking at concepts to try to reuse and try to improve and do different concepts for the downtown streetscapes designs. And the proposal that is coming today is a culmination to really kind of combine both of these projects, and is looking at doing a traffic study for the entire downtown area, which would be the whole area bounded by Gentry Parkway, Front Street, Palace, and Beckham. So, pretty much taking a lot of what was done by the county whenever they looked at just the square and expanding it for the rest of the area. And it's one of those things that has been generated, just looking at with the potential moving of the courthouse, the new historic designation for the downtown, the NORF development potentially coming in, and even the new commercial residential redevelopment we have been seeing coming through the area. It really looks like downtown's really starting to become a designation, so what we're hoping to have come from this study will be an ultimate implementation plan that will really help proactively start to plan for what needs to be done to handle the traffic that is going to be coming to downtown, that is expected to be coming from these new developments. I'll just try to keep it short right there. This is, proposal is being done through the Tyler Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is federally funded, but it is still going to be approved through the, the City of Tyler, that pays the cost upfront and is then reimbursed through the MPO's grant. So, in order to authorize the contract, it still needs to come and be authorized by the council to allow the city manager to approve the contract, which the recommended firm is Kimley Horn Associates, who did the downtown study on the square for the, the county, and they have a subconsultant of Tool Design who is doing the Main Street project. So, we really have the two firms who have already been doing the work downtown to really come and really try to finalize and get, get the options down, and we really think this is going to be a great implementation program for the downtown, and looking at all of the different scenarios. And the total contract is $195,900, and again, this is going to be approved through the grant funding, and if there are any questions, I'm certainly here to answer them.
You may have said this, and I didn't hear it, but is this study taken to consideration of the courthouse being there, new courthouse, or not being there?
The new court, yeah, it's considering the new courthouse location, with it being moved, and also trying to do some future planning of, once the courthouse gets moved, because there's going to be all the facilities that are currently spread around the downtown area that'll actually be focused in that new area, and also looking at the new parking structure that they will have. Those are really going to change the travel patterns that are going to be going throughout the downtown. One of the aspects of the study, we're also having our consultants look at, is the current network that we have, there's kind of a combination of one-way streets and two-way streets. We want to have them look at that and see if there is a way that we could try to improve that circulation that's going through the downtown, so if there needs to be a conversion for one way or the other.
What if it doesn't pass?
So, if it doesn't, then there's still going to be the other improvements that are coming from the downtown. For, for instance, again, the North Development, there's already the multitude of new residential housing units that are just across from the, the square, right across from the city hall. And there's more that looks like they're going to be coming. We really hear there's a lot of buzz coming from downtown. So even if the courthouse does not pass, there's still a lot of improvements and benefits that could still come from downtown.
How long will this take?
The projected scope is approximately nine months from the time that we execute contracts. So it would probably be, probably be early next year, probably February time, we'd probably be coming through with the final recommendations.
We'll sure know about the courthouse by then.
Michael, will, will your study take the unique, taking consideration the unique traffic that area has on Sundays?
I'll have to see exactly what they, they're looking at. Typically, whenever you're looking at a traffic study, they really typically look at your standard weekday traffic because that's going to be your, your average annual one. But, but you're right, there's a lot of traffic down there. There's so many churches in that area that we'll, we'll have that discussion with them and try to see what's going to be kind of that, that best circulation pattern. Because there's also the school that's there with the Caldwell Elementary. So, yeah, there's a, a very unique situation that there, there's so many institutions and they're there needing facilities at different times. And, yeah, that's what we're trying to see is what's going to be the best situation long-term.
And part of this stems from the Tool Study as well because the Tool Study does have recommendations about Broadway that, you know, it's, it had, in fact, that's where a lot of just kind of conversations about what do you do with Broadway, the return of downtown to two-way streets kind of throughout there and all. And so it's, especially for some of this, you almost kind of do that in unique, well, you do really need an engineering study to kind of give you recommendations and also basis for those changes that may occur. So that as, as we then invest in that future downtown, we know that there is at least a basis for that from an engineering perspective.
Michael, you said that there'd be federal funds going to this, is it 100%?
Yes, it's 100% federal funds.
Any other questions for Mr. Howell?
So move.
Well, you got a motion by McKeller, a second by Curtis and McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Y'all don't sound very energetic. Motion carries. Okay, we're to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda is presented.
You don't want to take out each item in the dictionary?
We got a motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Mayor, you have the, you always have the option of skipping the city manager report.
All right, let's go to the executive. Now go ahead.
No, you're going to, okay, fine. This, this is on the mayor's end. So, for the past several months, traffic operations have been making improvements in school zones as far as with the signs and the beacons throughout the city. The sign team updated, moved, replaced and cleared visual obstructions around the schoolwork zones, our work, school zone signs. And concurrently, the signal team worked on school beacon improvements which including building new beacon poles, digging foundations, pouring concrete bases and the electrical wiring. And so the entire team did a tremendous job on the project, completing it in time for the school to get started last week. Conference Center, yeah, I kind of made mention during the budget presentation a little bit about the conference center. And so we've been able to get new schedules from WRL on the WT Brookshire Conference, Conference Center construction schedule. And so we've been informed that there's some significant delays associated with the air walls. Those are the walls that are used to kind of separate the different, the, the big room into smaller rooms. The turnaround time is about 22 weeks and could be more. So, the delays are also affecting the delivery of the fountain for the park that'll be up at the front piece, especially the bowl part for that fountain. And so finally, the order details on the IT equipment are showing a late December delivery. So we're kind of changing the expectations a little bit to say, look, we're expecting to have it now open from March instead of either late December or Jan, early January. And so we'll kind of hold off on a grand opening as well as ticketed events until that time period, till the March, kind of 2023 time period. And then also on an engineering piece on the Shiloh Road construction and planning that's going along with that. The engineering department's been working with our consultant half and associates on the Shiloh Road preliminary engineering report. Initial topographic survey data has been collected, is now being processed. We're also working on stakeholder working, working group meetings that are being scheduled for, in fact, for this week. These are fact-finding meetings with some of the property owners and businesses who utilize Shiloh Road on a daily basis. And so especially want to give a thanks to Councilman Westbrook and Councilman Curtis who identified some of these stakeholders for us. And being able to kind of, then meeting with our design team. And so the next steps after the stakeholder meetings are to collect subsurface utility information for the area, initiate contact with Union Pacific Railroad and start developing initial alternatives based upon feedback from the various stakeholders. So mayor?
Anybody have comments for the city manager? Can we move on?
I do have one comment and must have been because my coffee had not kicked in this morning when our city engineer Darren Jennings was talking about the CIP plan, the half-cent sales tax plan.
Yes, sir.
This plan, I, I just want to commend you and Davis Dixon and also all of the half-cent sales tax committee members because you took this thing from 220 items down to 63. You fully vetted all of the programs and combined some, eliminated some. And I just have to commend you for the hard work that you did to streamline this plan to the point where it is. So thank you for your efforts. That's it, mayor.
All right. So, if the last two and a half hours were two hours, three hours, now we're going to go into executive session. City council may go into executive session regarding any item posted on the agenda as authorized by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given that the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions of the government code. Under Texas Government Code Section 551.072, real estate deliberation regarding the following. Discuss the purchase, exchange, sell, lease or value of real properties, a public discussion of which would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the city. Any final action to be taken by the city council will be taken in an open session. We'll be back.
One of those guys on the commercials, the retro.
Yeah.